Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is December 7, 2021. It's 9:37 a.m., and this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask our clerk if she can please call the roll and establish quorum and read the announcement.
Good morning, Supervisors Desmond, Kennedy, Natoli, Serna, Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 10th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you, and I'd like to invite everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back after Thanksgiving holiday. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving dinner and time with family and friends. I want to also thank the Sacramento County staff who kind of held down the fort. There were some skeleton crews, and there's always those employees in a large organization like this that hold down the fort during the holidays. We want to thank them for being here and doing that for all of us. And we have quite a bit of work to do, so we'll just jump right into our meeting. And I'll read the chair's announcement. The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county requires face mask or face shield while inside the county's administration building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in order of the in-person comments and then comments on the phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face mask or face shield is required, and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers or hearing rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside the chambers, and overflow seating is available in hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait for your turn to make a public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk's staff. The separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not posted on the agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers and wait for your turn to make your comment. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when it's the best time to call in to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk's staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures. And now at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent matters.
Yes, Madam Chair. For your consent matters, items 1 through 52. For item 15, you are ratifying the appointment of Marlon Yarber as Chief Probation Officer of Sacramento County effective December 19, 2021, and approving the compensation package. We will have a swearing-in of his position after you take up your consent matters. And then for item 43, you are adopting an ordinance emitting Section 2.61100 of the Sacramento County Code relating to service delivery consultant and training contracts for Departments of Health Services, Child, Family, and Adult Services, and Human Assistance. You waived reading on this on November 16th, and I believe that concludes my notes.
All right, and I believe this is a first for the whole year. I don't have any board members in the queue to speak, and so I will ask our clerk if we have any public comment on consent.
You do have public comments for item number 33, and I'll ask staff to please transfer the caller, excuse me, for item 34.
Flo, was that 34 or 44?
I'm sorry, 34.
Thank you.
Now we have board members in the queue, so we'll address public comments if that's okay, and then...
Okay, it looks like the person is not responding, and let me double-check the queue if we have any other callers. And as of right now, we do not have any other callers in queue for consent matters.
All right, and so we do have Supervisor Natoli has some comments, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just needed a clarification on item 3. I'm going to leave it on the consent calendar. There's a body of reports on the various community facilities district, but I had a specific question on one, so, and if I, I guess I can take that up if the clerk wants to call it.
Item 3 is to certify 16 county of Sacramento Melrose Community Facilities District annual reports for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
My question is, this past September, September 2020, we made the final on item. It's the attachment to the Laguna Creek Ranch, Elliott Ranch Community Facilities District, so that debt has been retired. And my question is, Colin, that in the previous one relates to Laguna Community Facilities Act, it talked about a board resolution that actually was taken to approve the cessation of the levy back in 2006 on that one. For the one that I just mentioned that follows in our packet on Laguna Creek Ranch, Elliott Ranch, the debt's been retired, but it doesn't talk about a board resolution, and I didn't see a board resolution attached. So is that no longer required, or is that a requirement in order to cease collection? And again, it's good, the improvements have been made, the monies are...
You know, honestly, I'm not entirely certain on that point, so I'll need to follow up on that.
Okay.
We won't be levying this. So in the previous, earlier in this year, you passed the levies for the next fiscal year, there was no levy in this district.
Right.
So I'll double-check and determine to find out if we need a resolution for that.
Yeah, I should know, there needed formal action. Obviously, property owners have been notified.
Right.
It comes as good news, the improvements were made, obviously have been in place in some cases since the beginning of the development, and others have come along over time. And again, I just, as I was comparing notes, I didn't know if it required a board resolution, so, and obviously...
I'll take a look at that.
Okay, very good. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions on item 25.
For item 25, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is on a contract for the First Amendment to Agreement with Dominichelli and Associates for Design Engineering and Construction Support Services for the Arden Area Pipe and Master, or excuse me, Meter Installation Project.
Thank you, and I notice Mr. Peterson has come to the podium. Thank you very much for being here. I talked to our county exec about this yesterday, and I just, I think this is such a large increase in the original contract, and so what I wanted today is, and I understand also, you know, being very familiar with this area, and these are older homes, older connections, and a lot more maybe involved than other projects like this. But before this board agrees to approve an increase of such a large amount, I think it's important for you maybe to provide a little more information, Michael, about the need for this and what we didn't know then that we know now.
Sure. So this project, the Arden Water Assistant Replacement Project, this, just for background, this is the single largest rehabilitation CIP that the department's taken on. This is a, I think roughly $125 million capital rehab project, and it is in the single oldest service area that we provide water service to. Through the process of Phase 1A, we really, one, we anticipated the need for Dominichelli as some additional design and project facilitation services. What we didn't anticipate was the need for additional inspection, field inspection and sort of field management of the project. We learned from that phase, and then in the subsequent phase, we did bring in an additional consultant to help bolster our inspection. And then what we saw was a remarkable efficiency in how the project was being carried out from Phase 1A to Phase 2A, and now into Phase 2B. Then looking ahead for the remaining of the phases 3 through 6 and Phase 1B, we realized that we're going to need that level of service from Dominichelli and CMI through the entirety of the project. And it just was, it was beyond, it was, I'd say, it's an anomaly in terms of what our CIP projects typically involve. There would be no comparable in terms of the level of, I guess, invasiveness and intensity and coordination, the scale of the project. It simply is outside, was outside the boundaries of what we would typically have seen with the CIP. And as we ran into the issues with Phase 1A, we really realized and we did, we assessed and we met with CMI, and said, we need to bring resources in so that collectively we can, we can deliver this practice as efficiently as possible with the least disruption as possible. And that's really what's driving this. Again, it is very unique in terms of its scale, and like you said, sort of the age of the area, the system, where it's located, and where we're moving, you know, from behind houses into the streets. It's one of the most significant projects we've done outside of building the Freeport Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant.
Okay, well, and thank you, I appreciate, I think that's important for the public to hear that. And when was the initial contract approved by the board?
That would have been, Dave Bolan is here. He could probably...
And that's okay, Michael. But I imagine when the board approved that initial contract, you anticipated that once we got into this, we would probably realize that there would be additional costs associated with this project.
We definitely knew that there were things we weren't going to know, just given the nature of the project and where it lays. And so every, again, every phase, we've taken lessons from and said, okay, well, let's bring the right resources in to make sure we can deliver this all the way through, so we don't do repeats of, you know, those unanticipated issues that we got in the first phase. And that's honestly why the second and third phases have gone as smoothly as they have.
And will this result in any additional, an increase in rates to the ratepayers that are affected by this project?
This project is currently being funded through Pago. It will be financed in long term. It will, you know, come, get repaid through rates, but this is part of, this has been built into the CIP. So it's, there'll be a future discussion on, you know, the timing and how that financing gets repaid back. This project as well, not only for the age, but it's got the mandate of having the meters, the meters to be required by 2025, so it's a regulatory driver as well.
But in our decision today, there is no associated rate increase with this decision.
That's not tied with this decision.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate you explaining this. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Item 21, please. Flo, item 21, please.
Item 21 is the Contract for Fern Bacon Middle School SRTS Improvements Project. Bids to be received on January 13, 2022, and the environmental document is a categorical exemption.
Thank you. I just wanted to just give a little bit of context to this item. This is something that we've been working on in District 2 for quite some time. It was initiated with a project that District 2 Funding provided for WAC Sacramento, and I want to thank staff, DOT has been fantastic in working on this. We did audits, we did walks with the community to identify where there were problems. People don't realize, but kids that were going to Fern Bacon were being forced to walk out in public streets because there was no sidewalks, and it was a very dangerous situation. It's involved SMUD as well as the community and our DOT staff and WAC Sacramento, so it's been an extensive heavy lift. But, you know, we all worked together to make safe routes to school for Fern Bacon, so I want to thank DOT for doing that and encourage my colleagues to reach out to WAC Sacramento. They do, they're called something, they just changed their name, but to reach out to WAC Sacramento where you have holes in safe routes to schools in your districts, because they really do great work and they're very good to work with and do a lot of, lot of heavy lifting for very little investment. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, we do not have more comments from the board at this time, but we do have some consent speakers, public speakers, so at this time, we'll go to the public comment in the board chambers, and we have one speaker, Ryan Harris, who wishes to speak to item 34. You have two minutes, Ryan.
I want to clarify, before I begin, I wanted to speak to item 34 as well as off-topic item.
Yes, we're not, we are not at the off-agenda items yet, so if you can speak to 34 at this time, that would be appropriate.
Okay, great. Thanks for explaining that.
Madam Chair, let me read that item into the record, please. This is the authority to execute a retroactive revenue agreement with the State of California Department of Public Health in the amount of $2,426,350 for the term beginning July 1 through June 30, 2023 for COVID-19, public health crisis response, and the public health workforce development supplemental funding, approving a salary resolution amendment and the Conflict of Interest Code to add three FTE-limited term positions and reallocate a senior public health nurse from .8 to 1.0 FTE position, and also to approve an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $838,282.
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Thank you for rereading that, because I did get in here and was, briefly went over and saw it, so I'm not sure if the funding's going to be allocated to the Department of Human Assistance, but if so, I just want to make sure that you run those numbers again and see where that money, where my money and your money and the Sid Simms money is going. The reason I could say that is because I have proof, and anytime you'd like to see it, let me know. But I do have proof, and I could show you how DHA has padded their stats in the past. And if I get access to my emails, I could show you where I emailed some supervisors, trainers, and program managers telling them that, and I think you'd be quite shocked at their replies. So again, that's why I see extra money going in there, and I've noticed while working there that it was allocated to the wrong places, and the time was allocated to the wrong places in time. So I just want to make sure that this additional money that we're giving them is going to be allocated to the correct places and not overlooked. Again, I asked, so yeah, with that said, I know it might be hard for you guys to look into it, because I'm still waiting for a couple of your supervisors' phone calls back. Rich and Don, Supervisor Desmond, and Supervisor Natoli. So I understand that you guys are busy, so I'm going to ask also if there's someone that could give me the, like, EDD numbers or the county auditors' numbers or assessors' numbers, so I could maybe get ahold of them if you guys are too busy to handle this issue.
Does that complete your statement?
For item number 34, Des, yes.
Thank you. I'm just going to refer you back to our personnel, county personnel, that would be the appropriate place to ask for that information.
All right, give me just a sec, so I can take that information down.
Do you have a comment, county executive?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make it clear that this funding on item 34 is going to the Health Department and not to the Department of Human Assistance.
That's great. I feel actually safe about that, but I'd still like to report, I like that contact information on the, you said it was the HR department that could give me...
One of our staff can give you the phone number after your comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where would you like me to meet them?
Pardon me?
Where would you like me to meet them?
At the back of the room.
All right, thank you.
Maybe someone can... Thank you, Mr. Harris. And I believe we have someone on the phone.
We do, and I'd like to ask staff to transfer the caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with, would you mind muting the meeting in the background, please?
Yes.
Okay, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm calling because I wanted to ask for everyone to please stop funding things for COVID-19. I want to urge the board to move towards ending the state of emergency in our county. Even Mr. Kennedy asked for less updates about COVID a couple weeks ago. Why did he do that? Because there's no emergency. Please remove clinics from schools, stop predatory practices away from the watchful eyes of caregivers. And I had a question about phone comments. I called last week, and I wasn't able to comment on consent items, and I had multiple. I had to do it after the fact, so now I'm calling in with multiple comments, and I'm told I have to call back every single time. So if the Board of Supervisors can see about, maybe streamline this a little bit better. So for those of us who want to comment on several items, do we have to keep calling back every single time for each item? Or like, how can we sign up for multiples since we're not there in person?
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Thank you.
So we have allowed people to make multiple comments on one phone call, and we've been doing that as a practice, so I'm not sure if you were misinformed, and I apologize if you were. But if you have multiple comments to make, you just announce that and let the chair know, and she will give you two minutes per item.
Okay, yes, when I was on hold, they told me I can only talk about item 34 right now.
Okay, could you give us the list of your other items?
I had item 26 as well.
Okay, and are you done with your statement for 34?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then you have two minutes for item 26.
And can I just read that item into the record really quick? That's the Authorization to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding with WEAVE for Providing Assistance to Domestic Violence, Sexual Assault, and Human Trafficking Victims and Their Families for the period of January 1 through December 31, 2025.
Yes, that's correct. I wanted to say thank you for providing support to survivors of trauma and to their families. I would like to ask, I'm not really clear on how the resolution wording works, but I would like to ask if we could edit the language and use survivor instead of victim. Those who have survived any type of domestic abuse, sexual trauma, trafficking, victim is not a word that they like to be labeled as, so I just wanted to ask and make everyone aware of that. And that's the end of my comment for item 26. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask our county council, is it possible to use the word survivor instead of victim in that?
I don't believe it's a legal issue to do either one, so, unless there's a term of art that I'm not aware of.
Do, does the board feel, any strong feelings about changing the word to survivor versus victim?
As long as it doesn't hold it up.
Can we do that and vote on it today?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to do that if we can. Thank you.
And I noted it in the record, and we'll make the amendment.
Thank you. All right.
That concludes your comments for consent matters. Would you mind, Madam Chair, if I close the public comments?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And at this time, I'll exercise a motion for approval for consent. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And so now, we will take the ratification, the appointment of Marlon Yarber as Chief Probation Officer, who is going to be sworn in by the Honorable Russell Haum, Presiding Judge of Sacramento Superior Court. If you could please come down to the podium.
Good morning, Judge Haum.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. If I can have a moment of sort of judicial privilege and just speak about Mr. Yarber. As the Presiding Judge of the Sacramento Superior Court, particularly during the times of the pandemic, I understand the importance of our justice partners, and more importantly, I understand the need for strong and competent leadership in our justice partners and our governmental entities. The judges of the Superior Court are empowered by statute to select the Chief Probation Officer of this county, and we did a very diligent search in attempting to find someone who had that level of competency. We looked for someone with integrity, someone with leadership skills, someone with competency, someone who would be supported by their institutional partners as well as their employees and staff. And more importantly, we looked for someone with vision, and frankly, we did not have far to look. Mr. Yarber was already a member and someone who played an important leadership role in the rebuilding of our probation department under Chief Seal, so he's someone who is well-known to us. And as a result, the judges of the Sacramento Superior Court reviewed, considered the applicants, and we unanimously selected and approved Marlon Yarber as the incoming Chief Probation Officer. So it is my esteemed privilege and honor to administer the oath of office to Mr. Yarber. I am Marlon Yarber.
I am Marlon Yarber.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution?
To the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will take this obligation freely?
And that I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Purpose of evasion.
And I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties about which I'm about to enter?
The duties about which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Excuse me. So it's great to hear all those great things. Most importantly, it's funny to hear them, it's great for my wife to hear them, really, because I was telling Judge Bowman, you know, out front, you know, at home, it kind of depends on where you rank, you know, you have the dog, and you have maybe the Amazon delivery guy, and I'm somewhere there, you know, in the middle, depends on, you know, which time of the year it is, so. You know, no, in all seriousness, thank you to the board first. Appreciate you allowing us, you know, a little bit of time this morning, I know the calendar's busy. Thank you to the county executive, thank you to the court, the court executive as well. Appreciate, you know, all the support. Sorry, I get choked up a little bit. You know, I wouldn't be here really if it weren't about the people, the people in the department, what they stand for, you know, what they believe in. You know, there's a lot of scrutiny around what law enforcement does or doesn't do, what we do well, what we don't do well, and I like to think, you know, my unique perspective and experience, history, maybe well situates me to, you know, take the department into the future. You know, we're joking about... You know, we're joking about, you know, having to clean up from the last guy, and there really is no cleanup. You know, I was talking to one of my advisors, really our executive coach for the department, and he was like, you know, when you buy a house, you know, rarely ever is it turnkey, you know, but even if it is, you still, you know, your wife may still want you to paint it, or, you know, you still may need to move a few plants, and, you know, it's about renovation and continuing to evolve. And so really, the department's in an excellent position, and my job is really just to evolve us and keep us sort of forward-looking and be prepared for, you know, all the things that are on the horizon. I'm excited for the opportunity and also the responsibility, you know, it's a huge task, there's so much changing in our industry, but again, with the men and women who support me, you know, all the way from our Assistant Chief, Julie Wary, who's here, all the way down to, you know, the newest recruits who haven't even been sworn in yet, I swear they're in tomorrow, but they were helping me on Friday with an issue in our parking lot with one of our clients. So, you know, I've got the backing of an incredible team, and with that, I think we're positioned to really support both this board, the court, of course, and also the community, who I think, you know, are looking for much more from us as an industry and as a department. So thank you for your time and your graciousness today on the calendar.
Chief Yarber, before you go, I just wanted to say that I think one of the most important things that you think about when you're replacing a top executive is to get someone in there that will provide continuity and be professional and carry on the good work of the past, and I know Chief Seal is here, I saw him, yes, hi, Chief. Chief Seal was all that. He was a visionary, and he did so much while he was here, and you were with him, and I was, I personally was so excited to learn that you were the pick of the judges, because not only of your, you've been so helpful, you're such a great communicator, and you have a good, kind heart, and when there's problems, you're open to going and talking to people and working them out, and you've helped me, I know, in situations. So I want to thank you for your commitment to the county over time, and I'm excited that you're in this role, and wish you every, all the best in this position. And we do have other supervisors who wish to speak, so.
Thank you, supervisor.
Stick around for a minute. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So first, let me say congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to not just offer my congratulations, but really kind of pick up with how you started your gracious monologue just a few moments ago, and that was citing the fact that law enforcement these days is, you know, under a great deal of scrutiny for different reasons. But I have to tell you, and hopefully you and the rest of the department, the people that make up that department understand that I, and I think the rest of the board, really have a great deal of respect for the unique charge and mission that probation has for the community. And there's so many things that go unheralded or unidentified that the people of our probation department do on their free time, they do for the community directly, in addition to their, you know, official capacity, and a lot of that, I think, was groomed and developed under your predecessor. And I know that, having worked with you for the last 11 years, that that will continue to flourish and be a big part of who the probation department is, and I'm just extremely proud to say that we have you as our chief, and really look forward to your years of service and contribution, and I'm very happy that the court's found it, that you were the best candidate, and I think the rest of us were kind of looking around saying, of course, he's the best candidate, but to have you stand here today as our new chief is really something that I'm glad we're ending the year on. It sets a great tone for 2022 and beyond.
Thank you. Thank you for those kind words.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I would certainly echo the comments of Judge Haum and my colleagues' chief. Want to extend congratulations to you, but I think, again, your work, certainly in your previous role with the department over the years, I think exemplifies many things that have been highlighted, and even your comments here today, I think, obviously you bring, you know, a level of, certainly of, a sense of humor in a real way, but also a real sense of what the responsibility that you and your department shoulders in respect to, you know, the charge and the mission that you have, but also the responsibility to the broader community. And I know that you and members of the department take that very seriously.
Yes, we do.
And certainly do your best to carry out those in a variety of ways, and obviously things have evolved, as you said, and will continue to evolve, and I think, you know, looking to the future, but also certainly building on a foundation that's been laid, and I think of your house analogy, where I think you have a strong foundation, and may rearrange a few things, and obviously put your imprint of leadership and work with your leadership team and certainly members of the department, but I think we're in good hands, I don't think, I know we're in good hands with you in this role, and I wanted to just offer congratulations and certainly look forward to working with you and members of your department as we all work to best serve the citizens of this county. So congratulations to you, Marlon.
Thank you, thank you, supervisor.
Well, congratulations, and best wishes for a smooth sailing future in probation.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It looks like, yes, oh, we get to meet your wife.
Yeah, it wouldn't be possible without.
Oh, that's so great.
I think that he paid you guys, but this is a lot of money to cover.
Thank you. I think it takes a strong woman to be married to a law enforcement person.
All right. Next item, I think, was we were gonna finish up some comments on consent and then go to public comment. Yeah, we have just one caller who wants to make a comment on two items, item 29 and item 34, and I will ask if you could transfer the caller, please. Item 29 is the approval of an appropriation adjustment request for expenditures related to the upgrade of the Cal ID multi-biometric identification system. Hi, caller, could you please mute the meeting in the background?
Yeah.
Okay, and please start with your comment on item 29, you'll have two minutes for that, and then after that, you can go to do item 34.
Sure. I just want to start, this is Gabrielle, by saying the meeting's so much easier when they're in person, but I think that the rules are in place partially to limit participation, making it harder, but anyway, I know you guys already voted, but item 29, and those on the microphone, I can hear the deep side. Item 29, I had a question on the multi-biometric identification system upgrade. I read the language on what the sheriff was saying it was used for, and that makes sense. My concern is that there's not language on what it will not be used for, with the mayor pushing for no vax proof, no entry, and then all of the different counties around us and cities that are already mandating vaccine passports. My concern was that there's no language stating what this will not be used for. So that was item 29, I had a question there. And then item 34, my concern is that we've got another $2 billion for public health around COVID-19, when there's been zero proof that we still have an emergency, and no case rates are not proof of an emergency. If we were tracking the common cold and swabbing people's noses and saying, woo, look at all these cases, we would say we could create a pandemic for case rates around the common cold. There's no logic there. I don't see any data on death rates. I mean, I can pull the data myself and look at it, we don't have an emergency. In a true emergency, where we're designating another $2 billion, and this seems to have passed pretty easily for salaries and whatever they're using this money for, you don't fire medical staff during an emergency. You don't put law enforcement and firefighters and all these different city attorneys, you don't put these people on leave without pay because they won't take a jab for an emergency. You need your public health services, you need all these people. You don't, we wouldn't be the only state in the nation that has these extreme measures if there was truly a national emergency. So my concern is that this board keeps passing really big budget items. When we look at the budget, if we didn't have this COVID money, we would be in a lot of pain. I mean, I don't know that we'd be on the verge of bankruptcy, but would we really balance that budget if we didn't have this ISCOM money coming in? So when we're at a state of inflation, and we're at a state where public health is not proving that the death rates are that high, and that there's not a manipulation of when we get the bed rate from the hospitals, they're not counting how many beds there are, they're counting how many, what their nursing ratio is to those beds. So I would like to see what the, how many beds are open with or without staff.
You have 15 seconds.
So there's a lot of discrepancies here. Thank you. So there's a lot of discrepancies here, so I would like to challenge you, if there's a big money item coming through again, can y'all ask some questions and ask for some data to prove that we even need to spend that? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your comments on the consent. As of right now, we do not have any off-agenda public comment callers, so I'm gonna close that queue, if that's okay?
Sure. And we'll ask for Ryan Harris. I believe that's our only public comment on off-agenda.
I wanted to catch the officer before he left, because last time you guys stopped me from telling the family of the deceased one, so I wanted to catch him while he was still alive. I can play a video for you next week, if you don't recall. All right, so I'm here for off-agenda, correct?
Yes.
All right. Do you guys take the same oaths? Do you guys take oaths? Well, I know you can't reply, never mind. All right, so I do want to apologize for the last meeting that we were here, it was said by Sue Frost that I was given more time than allowed. I went back to go watch the meeting, and I did speak my two minutes, but I believe the confusion came in when Supervisor Kennedy broke you guys' own protocol, it is on a mission, and I'm not sure the lady that was over there, but when I watched the video, she said you guys shouldn't be replying either. So maybe that's why it seemed like it was a little bit longer than two minutes, because I did attempt to leave, and he called me back up here to state his two cents that he wanted to add. But after watching the video again, you know, I noticed that that two cents wasn't needed because you said arrest. I never said I got arrested, sir. I just wanted to clarify that for the record as well. But I do think it's quite funny that I'm here asking you guys to help with some lies that have been put in my file by this lady here, as well as others in your department, and I could prove their lies, and yet, you know, I'm at the risk of losing my job for this, for lies that were fabricated, yet this gentleman over here just intentionally broke protocol, and, you know, I'm sure they'll be bent for his pleasure, or they may or may not, I'm not sure, but it just kind of makes me wonder how, like, I'm getting in trouble for people making up things about me, and, you know, he's intentionally breaking your guys' policies, yet I'm being penalized for things that haven't even happened, so I hope you guys could understand that. And I want to let you know, I'm wearing a face shield today because I believe you guys are trying to make me look like an angry black man, so I just want you all to see my smile, like, I'm a good person, you could check my track record on it, we got worker grams, I got like one of the most worker grams for positive people from the community, the most. You can probably check that if you want, it's thick, the most out of any other worker. But nonetheless, that's all I was coming up here to say, is that I'm not an angry black man, and I just wish you guys would, you know, do your jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please. Item 53 is the annual reports for the County of Sacramento Development Impact Fee Programs for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
Good morning, Dorothy.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the board, and an early happy holidays. Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. Under the authority of the Mitigation Fee Act, the county ministers' development impact fee programs, which provide funding for roadways, parks, libraries, transit, and fire facilities in newly developing areas, infill locations, and the entire incorporated county. The same government code requires that certain information on the fees be available. In response to this requirement, the annual report for 16 impact fee programs for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021 is presented to the board today as a receive and file. Some of the reporting elements that are required in these annual reports include a brief description of the fees, the amount of the fees, beginning and ending fund balances, the amount of fees collected, and the interest earned during the fiscal year, improvements on which the fees have been expended, and any activity related to funds which are held by the statewide community infrastructure program. Major highlights which have been included in the annual report are the current widening of Elk Grove-Floren Road, which is funded by the Vineyard, North Vineyard Station, and Floren Vineyard programs. The design of the Vineyard Library on Bradshaw Road will begin in this fiscal year. There are multiple projects which are funded through the newly approved Metro Air Park Fee Program. The NEXIS studies and corresponding fees for the eight park districts which are included in the annual report will be brought to your board in early 2022. And also in 2022, we anticipate updating the initiating update of the Vineyard, Mather Field, and the library fee programs. With that, that concludes my presentation, and we're happy to address, or I hope we can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli has some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Dorothy. What I wanted to point out this morning, and again, certainly thank you for the written report, and I think your brief summary, and certainly very pleased, and I know they're nearing completion on the widening of Elk Grove-Floren from Gerber to Floren Road, and that'll certainly be a good boost for movement of folks, and certainly goods and services, and people's movement in that area, and then once the construction's completed. And I know we're working on a project that will take that all the way to north of Jackson Highway and actually widen that corridor over the next few years. What I wanted to ask about, though, and I know we had to utilize a significant sum of money to accomplish that project, and as you said, it came out of Floren Vineyard and North Vineyard Station financing plans, but, and I pointed this out previously, and I know that I'm in briefing regularly with Department Transportation staff, I want to continue to raise the concern about, because it's not contained in the financing plan any longer, and that is the completion of the Waterman Road crossing of the central California tracks. The neighborhood continues to grow, and it's good, people are purchasing new homes, we're seeing additional commercial development, both proposed, as well as some that's in the ground already. It's a very active area when it comes to construction of new dwelling units, and I know there are some multifamily projects that are certainly being contemplated. And I continue to raise the concern, because as recently as this morning, I get comments from residents regarding the area that's dedicated for that purpose, but it's now, folks are taking the liberty of going around county barricades or dumping materials and so forth. We'll work to address that, and DOT has been working on that. But I guess I wanted to point out, and I think it's very important, and I make the point again, that we need to find one agreement with the Public Utilities Commission and with the railroad regarding how we're going to cross those tracks, and to have Waterman Road, which is a major connector through that community and would allow for obviously movement of north-south traffic between Bradshaw and Elk Grove-Floren South Watt, I just think it's imperative. And so, again, your department has a role, obviously, in the financing, but I want to point that out, because it is that we continue to add homes, add more people, and the movement through there, the frustration is growing in those neighborhoods, and I know that we're trying to find a pathway to get that constructed, so I guess I just wanted to highlight that as we talk about the financing plans, but also the need to come to some terms with the railroad, and I know there's some efforts afoot, and I've offered, as one of the representatives for the area, I shared it with Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna in the adjoining areas, there's a real need, and we don't have, we don't really- have, we don't, we don't really, we, we have a, a thought and a, and a plan of how we'd like to approach it, but we don't have agreement on it. And second, we don't have the money to build it. At grade would certainly be far less expensive, obviously, than if we have to grade separate. But, um, the impatience in the neighborhood is growing and I just wanted to point that out. And I don't know if your department hears about that. Obviously, you're, you're kind of managing the money, but, um, I, I think it's important to point that out. But it's certainly appreciated work in Elk Grove Floren. That took almost 25 years from conception to construction completion. Uh, but again, it's, I know folks are going to appreciate, uh, that facility makes for safer for all modes of travel. So thank you for your work on that. But, um, we, we will need to, uh, and I just like to, to, to end, the county executive on the Waterman Road, we need to continue to, to really press the point. And if we need to do a letter from this board to the railroad officials, um, and certainly working with, you know, some of the development community in that area. But, um, I can tell you that the neighbors are getting, um, more and more anxious about, um, the lack of that facility at just dead ends and it's becoming, uh, an area where we're seeing some nuisance activities. But, uh, the bottom line is we need to build that. Anyway, thank you.
Oh, thank you for your comments. And I do know I personally have been part of some, um, meetings regarding that project and we can definitely, um, report back to you, coordinate with the Department of Transportation as far as the status.
Right. I know folks are working on it. So thank you, Dorothy. Thanks. That's all I have, Matt Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. I do not have anyone else in the queue to speak. I don't know if there's anyone on the phone.
We do not have any public call, uh, callers for this item.
Okay. Thank you, Dorothy.
Oh, thank you very much.
If you don't have any comments, I move receiving, receiving file, do we need a board action on this?
I thought it was just a receive and.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is. No action is required on this item.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 54 is the Workshop on Fees applicable to residential construction and associated feasibility.
Morning, Bob.
Good morning. Um, Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. And, um, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. And, and for this presentation, first I'm going to go over the PowerPoint and then Chris Norm and his team, um, have, uh, items that they, uh, wish to present as well. And then, um, after they speak, Ron Bakari is going to, uh, wrap this, uh, item up and, and certainly we can answer any questions along the way that your board has. So on, um, October 19th, at the public hearing on the Cordova Recreation and Park District Proposed Impact Fee, the board continued that item until today and asked that we bring this workshop to discuss the fee, uh, the, the, the load, the whole, um, amount of fees on housing projects and their cumulative effect on feasibility of residential development. And so we've, uh, taken on that task and, um, I'm going to present, um, in this PowerPoint, the, the highlights of also what we included in the staff report. So, um, first of all, I, I do want to discuss that, um, we have a long history of partnership with the BIA and developers, um, in this community related to impact fees. So we're not just talking now. You know, we've been, uh, talking for years. And, uh, for example, um, there was, um, from 2009 to 2011, and I think it even continued on for a little bit after that, we had an ad hoc committee called the, called the Fees, Costs, and Standards Committee where a team of county employees, um, from many different, um, aspects of, of public works and municipal services worked with the team from the BIA and, um, their developers that they brought in to review fees, costs, and standards, um, and, and try to find what, what savings we could. That effort touched at least 20 programs. We were able to reduce fees in development areas such as Carmichael through North Vineyard Station, and Carmichael was 4% reduction, and North Vineyard Station was 17% reduction, for example. Um, we also were able to reduce non-fee, um, items such as the North Vineyard Station Sawtooth frontage policy, which, um, was a development, uh, build op, uh, item that, um, rather than Class A standard, now requires Class D standard with asphalt pathway. So just the change of that standard reduced that, that line item by 42%. That effort also saw the implementation of, um, park fees for eight infill park districts with a memorandum of understanding with the BIA and park districts and, and the county in regard to reasonable park fees, you know, uh, for those eight districts. And also at that time, uh, direction regarding reciprocal funding agreements with neighboring, uh, jurisdiction, uh, came out of that effort. So with that, um, similar to that effort, but may, but, um, maybe trying to focus and pinpoint the effort, um, county staff has been working with the BIA, um, and their team. In fact, we've had three meetings since the last meeting in October on the Cordova Recreation and Park District to discuss maybe a similar effort, but more of a pinpoint focused effort that we can work with the industry and have the industry identify the areas that they would like to focus on. And so rather than just going every fees, costs, and standards, pinpoint and focus on the areas where the industry feels that, um, that, that we'll get the most bang for our buck with a, a, a review and, and review those items. And so, um, we've been talking about that. I believe both the county and the BIA are interested in proceeding forward with that effort. And like I said, we've been talking as recently as last Friday. So with that... So with that, I want to, um, refer you to Attachment One. One of the items that was requested that we bring back to this workshop is what is the whole load of fees on development projects? And, um, I wasn't able to include this in the PowerPoint, but, um, there is Attachment One in the staff report is for five development areas, you know, what, what that, what that is. There are 33 line items. Of course, not all 33 line items affect every program, but, um, uh, for the five areas together, we, we came up with, um, 33 line items that represents the, all the fees that are on a project, uh, housing projects that would be in those development areas. Um, you know, when, I'm not going to go into the fees individually, but there is staff here. If your board has questions on any of the fees, likely we have staff, either myself or staff in the audience, that, that could answer your questions. But we also did provide a glossary that gives a very brief description of what, um, each of these fees or cost items are. And, uh, these items are broken down into three main categories. Um, county permit fees, development impact fees, which are fees like the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee, or the Sacramento County, uh, Library Fee, which are either district-wide or county-wide. The Cordova Recreation and Park Fee is proposed, that's proposed today, it would be part of that category as well because it would be a district-wide fee for them. And then finally, um, planned area fees, which are planned, which are associated with master planned areas such as North Vineyard Station, Floren Vineyard, Antelope, one of our earlier planned areas, um, and, and Mather South, which is a not-yet-implemented area, but has been talked about a lot, um, in these recent discussions. So with that, um, so this slide here, um, shows these five areas and shows the, um, the load of fees that's on each of, of these areas. One thing you could see is that the building fees are relatively consistent. The impact fees, which are shown in orange, are also relatively consistent, but, um, a little bit higher, uh, for some of the newer development areas. And then, um, finally, the, the, the planned area fees, which, um, in general, I think the planned area fees are, are the areas that have the highest cost. And so, so, um, this slide shows that the range in the load of fees is from $65,000 a unit for low-density residential in Carmichael to 114,000, um, in the proposed Mather. And like I said, in general, the higher costs tend to be in these planned areas. And, you know, for example, um, the planned areas, they go through the process, the, the planning process, the development process, and there's, uh, standards today that didn't apply when the Antelope area went through its, uh, development process. Also too, um, uh, planned areas can take on certain issues like Floren Vineyard and North Vineyard Station have components to address the, the sawtooth frontage issue and have frontage components. So because they take that on, there's several thousand dollars that's in those fees to cover that component that another development area that's not taking on the frontage obligation and is just leaving that obligation to the adjacent developers, still a cost for that developer, but it's just not a cost that ends up in a fee program. Mather South is another example. Um, there's interior roads in Mather South, um, and, and there's a trail component that includes ride-away dedication that's, um, in, in that component. You don't see that in, say, the Antelope area. So with that, the next slide, uh, this discusses the overall feasibility. Public facilities financing plans for recently approved areas, um, going back several years, have included a 20% test as an indication of feasibility. Um, as county staff, we do not have the developer's pro forma. That's the real analysis of feasibility. If a developer's pro forma is positive and a project's a go, then the project is feasible. But, um, um, with the, uh, the feasibility analysis approximates that when fees are over 20% of, of home value, feasibility becomes more challenging. Now, this is not an absolute rule and, um, certainly, um, if there are savings in other areas, projects may not, may be able to support over 20% and, and vice versa, there could be challenges in other areas, like infill areas that have expensive infrastructure requirements, but it doesn't show them fees. Those can affect the pro forma, even though the analysis shows that the fees are well under 20%. So on, on, on this slide, this is based on 2019, and we just chose that because that's when Mather South, um, went through the development process and, um, it was just a point in time that we picked. And we show these five development areas and this slide certainly shows that North Vineyard Station and Mather South are over that 20% threshold.
Excuse me. We have a couple of supervisors who wish to speak. Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, Bob. I was going to ask you on the previous slide, but it applies here and probably to your, um, slides that are forthcoming. On the Mather South, um, components, what, how is the calculation for what's required to, uh, the residential commercial portion, um, to contribute to the Vernal Pool Preserve? How much this, and is this calculated here? I guess, first, is that calculated in here? That burden?
Um, I am not exactly sure about the... Dorothy Codani, do you?
Looks like Todd's coming up.
Todd Smith is, maybe can add to that.
Good morning, supervisors.
Morning.
Todd Smith, Principal Planner, Long Range Planning Team. Uh, the mechanism for funding the Vernal Pool Preserve at Mather is part of a formula that our economic development staff, uh, worked out with not just Mather South, but also the other county departments in Oland at Mather. So their share, uh, is not included in the public facilities financing plan. It's part of a separate agreement amongst various county departments as well as the developer.
And thank you, Todd, for the clarification, but then I, I think that in reality, though, um, uh, and again, I've, you know, mentioned this a couple of previous occasions, um, if I'm not mistaken, it, it loads a pretty heavy responsibility. I mean, airports participates in that, some of the other county-held properties, uh, but it, again, without having the specifics here, it seems to me that that adds to it. And it's certainly a calculation that, and whether it's Lewis Homes or anybody else, um, and, you know, we're, we're in partnership on that property, um, and then on other properties outright and, and will, uh, when it comes to airport and so forth. But when, when you're looking at that, that factors in and it doesn't, um, and I think it accounts for, I have concerns about this, is that the endowment that's going to be, going to be, um, essential to meeting certainly our obligations and, and having that, uh, preserve and all the conservation strategies and, and, um, restoration that will go with, with the, those responsibilities. And so I guess I would just ask, uh, because I think it's important. I mean, and again, I, the other Jackson Quarter properties, I don't believe have to bear those costs. It's, if I understood Todd correctly, there's a formula that, and I, and I will just say, I think it's, it's, it's probably time, I said this at the, last year and alluded to it, that we have a conversation regarding a truly regional, not just regional in the sense that it's part of, um, the Sacramento County outline, but, you know, there's probably nothing quite like Mather, uh, anywhere in the region. And, uh, you know, that was part of what we took on in accepting responsibility for the former military base when it came into our, into our hands. And, and so, uh, to calculate, and I believe the calculation is, is fairly heavy on the Mather South project, um, and since we don't have those numbers, I don't want to get, get too far astray from what you're presenting, Bob, but I would just say that, and looking at this and to your point about the internal streets, and I appreciate you pointing that out on, on Mather, but there's another component here. And it's not, uh, it may not be visible on the chart, but it's not invisible to the, to, to the parties, including the county, who is, has the element of responsibility to see to it that the obligations are met in the conservation Vernal Pool Preserve, but also how we, you know, either account for, uh, dollars that will need to be put in that endowment, which are in an order of magnitude of several million dollars. Um, you know, I've seen estimates between, you know, eight and 12 and even beyond, but a million. And I guess I would ask, um, at a, at a future date after the first of the year, um, to have some conversation. I understand we may even have an item next week on, on another related matter, to have some discussion about that. Because I think that, um, you know, if, if we're looking at, as we've had conversations and part of this was outgrowth of concerns about housing and housing costs and so forth, and we have an approved development, obviously there's an arrangement that may have been understood when we went into this some nearly 15 years ago now with some of the development partners. But it, you know, it, it's in addition to what you see on the chart there. So I don't know if you, if you calculate that in, what that responsibility would look like, but I got to imagine it would probably add another couple of percentage points in there and, and without knowing for certain, I don't want to even hazard a guess. But I think it's relevant. And I think it's relevant to the conversation that we as a county, we as a board, uh, should have, uh, and, you know, with some currency to it, about how we plan to, um, recover those costs or align those costs of that long-term obligation, the endowment, which is in perpetuity, part of some of the environmental reports we've done and so forth. And I see LeAnn coming up too, so, um, but, but, you know, I know economic development's had a hand in this, obviously with the planning entitlements and, uh, you know, it, it, there's a, a large, a larger component that follows the Mather South and in some of the other areas there. So, hi, LeAnn.
Hi, LeAnn Moffett, the Planning Director. Just very briefly, I think it would be good to engage economic development because I think a component of that has to do with the land value and the deal between county and the developer in that case. Um, and so I think we would need economic development to sort of dig in, which is a little different than the financing part, um, because it's, it's really about that, that deal and how much the land, how much that's taken into account in terms of the value of the land.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, you know, as I said, with some currency, and I appreciate those comments. I think it, yeah, it highlights what I was, was alluding to. And so I'd like us to have an opportunity to talk around that and that, you know, as we look at budgeting, certainly in, in the year to come, uh, you know, thus far, we haven't really set forth any dollars in endowment and we, you know, a number of different strategies out there that have, you know, protected, uh, you know, at least the perimeter and when certainly County Parks has been, you know, a strong partner and leader on this, working with economic development. But I know it has a component and whether it's built into land costs, either past or present or going forward, I think we ought to know that and then see how that, because ultimately though, everhaw is taking into account, that endowment for the Mather Vernal Pool Preserve has to be accounted for. And we've agreed to do that, obviously as part of, you know, some of the approvals that we've granted here most recently, but as part of taking, accepting that land from the air force. So I'd like to have maybe an opportunity and, uh, after the first of the year to set a time so we could actually have a focused discussion about that, uh, in, in the various components. And I think it does affect the Mather South to some degree. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So, um, my question, uh, Bob, has to do with, uh, this chart and the, uh, subsequent one. Um, what, what was the assumption about, uh, estimated sales price? Because it's, it's one thing to say, well, it's, you know, 20, it's 20, over 20% of the sales price in a seller's market versus a buyer's market. And so I don't know, this doesn't tell us, doesn't inform us whether or not you're using some kind of average.
Sure.
Um, but that, to me, seems like a very important part of the calculus here.
So, uh, thank you. Very good question. Um, so we, uh, discussed that as staff and, um, special district staff that worked on that did their best they could with the tools available and the timeframe we had. We. We used Zillow and online resources, and I, staff actually went to the five development areas. Of course, Mather South doesn't have any houses now, but you know, nearly approximate areas, and they looked at, you know, 10 or 15 sales for about the size of the prototype-type project that we were assuming that we ran through the process of calculating the fees for. So we did our best without being real estate experts to basically use the tools available to figure out what we felt was a good value for the prototype development project.
So this reflects current values?
And, and current, we did the same thing for 2021.
Right.
Of course, you know, as available as the information was, but we repeated the same analysis for the most recent sales in those areas.
And obviously, if you did the same exercise in 2007 or 2008, you'd have a very different picture, wouldn't you?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just think it bears noting that that's, you know, a big, at least for me, it's a big influencer in terms of how you interpret these particular graphs, because I think, as I stated in a previous meeting, you know, when it's a seller's market, when prices are high, you know, you can argue that the builder, the developer maybe has more latitude to absorb the additional cost of adjusted fees upwards, but in a market where it's a buyer's market, it's going to be a much different type of impact to the pro formas for those projects.
Correct.
And I think that's, you know, a very worthwhile thing to note when we're trying to get our minds wrapped around what constitutes, you know, an infeasible versus a feasible total cumulative fee load for new residential projects.
No, very good point, and I think I was going to make a similar point, that, you know, if you did look at it, that 20% test and just strictly applied that today, yes, it is a seller's market, and it looks good today, but that doesn't mean there's not an issue here. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't work to make the load of fees more feasible, and certainly we're willing to work with the BIA to do that. If, you know, while prices are higher now, if they decline tomorrow like they did in the 2008 to 2009 timeframe, a feasible project today will be infeasible tomorrow.
One other factor, though, is interest rates, because if interest rates go up, then the ability to carry costs associated with whatever that price is becomes, you know, that becomes a critical piece, even if you don't have a real downturn or, you know, a slowing or a decline in prices. I think the interest rates become a factor, and of course, you've been blessed, I guess, in many, in some ways.
Both the cost of the money for the developers, well as the consumer.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, and the long-term carrying cost of that over 30 years or whatever the mortgage period is, so.
So the next slide, we didn't have the time or ability to do a comparison with the development areas. In 2019, we retained Willdan to do such a study. We tried to do as much of an apples-to-apples comparison as we could, and so this actually included the fees, also the very top, the teal-blue bar at the top, also added CFDs, because some development areas like North Interstation use the CFDs to pay for the impact fees and then bring the fee burden down. Others fund separate facilities in the CFDs, so this was trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison of the total burdens, you know, whether they were funded by fees or separately by CFD. And what this slide shows is that, and there certainly are development areas that have a lesser fee load or a lesser burden, as well as there are areas that are commensurate with the ones in Sacramento County and some even higher. So just, you know, pointing out the different development areas with like master plan-type developments, you know, in the region. So with that, just want to talk a little bit about some of the challenges. You know, first of all, master plan projects, they have standards, mitigations, and other requirements determined during the planning phase, including the cost to extend infrastructure to the developments, and other items that we talked about, the frontage items and the trails within plan areas and interior streets and such. So, you know, through that master planning process is where the plan area fees are developed, and like we've showed earlier, is that the areas that are master plan areas with plan area fees definitely tend to be the highest-loaded fee areas, you know, within our county and elsewhere as well. And these plans do need to be compliant with many standards, many requirements, conditions, some driven by state law, which, you know, state law changes. It does increase the price of infrastructure, which, you know, translates to ultimately increases in the fees. We require public facilities financing plans that identify existing and proposed mechanisms to pay for the required infrastructure, and that these be balanced through phases, and mechanisms need to be identified to pay for the shortfalls, and which then leads to those plan area fees. And then so far, but we do have tools, and we've had county CFDs for a long time, and so developers like Lennar have been able to develop in the North Interstation area and use the CFDs to take credit against their fees and therefore bring their burden down, and at least in their case, the pro forma obviously turned out to be positive because they were able to develop their project. Now we have Skip and Bold, which your board has authorized recently, that allows smaller projects to entertain the same kind of financing tools that are available to them to help those projects move forward as larger developers like Lennar. So, and since we joined Skip several years ago, and just recently joined Bold, we've had, we've been one of the top counties in regards to skip financing, so you know, so developers have been using that tool, and it has been successful. And Bold just started, but we're already working with, Lennar's using it up in the Antelope area and the Barrett Ranch development. So then the final slide that I had is, questions did come up about trail costs, so I just wanted to address questions from the last hearing in regards to trails. And the total trail length per low-density residential unit is greater in the Jackson Corridor than in North Interstation in the Floren Vineyard plans, and it has to do with the length of trail per capita. So the total trail length per low-density residential unit in Mather South was 14, and in North Interstation, Floren Vineyard, it was eight and four respectively, so, you know, Mather South had basically doubled the trails of North Interstation. But do you want to point out that even though there's trails and there's cost, the Jackson Corridor developers are seeking to reduce their VMT analysis, transportation analysis, and associated greenhouse gas emissions, which they get credit for, and they are able to use the fact that they have a proposed trail system to have other savings on their development projects? Also, too, general plan policy LU 120 requires that pedestrian, that master plan projects that expand the UPA urban policy area requires pedestrian-oriented design with a prominent pedestrian and bike network, and so Mather South and other developments are certainly responding to that requirement. A secondary difference resulting in the lower cost in North Interstation and Floren Vineyard is most of the trails tend to be on right-of-way that's either in another program or already owned by the county, like Rhodes Drainage Quarters and such. And in Mather South, the trails are interior, and there's an actual right-of-way reimbursement component proposed for Mather South, which is not implemented yet.
Excuse me.
So with that, that's the end of the paragraph, and I could certainly answer any more questions that you may have. And I do want to reiterate that we have had a productive talks and have a history of working with the BIA, and just finally, nobody's arguing the math. I think everybody agrees on the numbers that, you know, maybe minor differences. I did see the BIA study, and it's not too different than the information that we presented you today. But we do believe that we have a path moving forward, that we can work with the BIA, that we can focus our effort on the fees and implement changes that could be helpful to everybody. So with that, like I said, I think Chris and his team would like to present some items, and then Ron Vaccari will wrap things up.
Thank you, Bob. Before we move forward, Supervisor Natoli had some comments.
Yeah, just a quick follow-on, Bob. Thank you for the last slide on the trail costs. I wanted to ask, just as you were running through it verbally, with the analysis that goes around, certainly in the SEQA documents for the vehicle miles traveled and the work to address that, have you quantified or in your conversations either with the BIA or certainly from a staff perspective, you look at a higher, a higher number related to low-density residential per foot, your calculation on what that means on an applied fee for the trail component, but you referenced this either offset or, I don't know if it's savings, but certainly so that projects can proceed. Have you, has anybody done any work around that? Because I think that's a relevant point, and certainly goes into the planning processes, but obviously, obviously to the final product and how, you know, what people are paying for, but what, you know, what entitlements are conditioned upon in order to allow those developments to move forward. So I'm just curious, have you?
So I have that personally. I'll ask Todd Smith to see if he can address that.
Okay.
Good morning again, board members. To your question, Supervisor Natoli, about quantification of the trails as a mechanism to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, first of all, the trail networks of these types of projects are built into the transportation modeling analysis, excuse me, which then feeds into the air quality and greenhouse gas analysis. If you, we could look at certain metrics like mode split, the percentage of the residents that would look at trails as a means of transportation or use them. That data goes into the air quality, greenhouse gas analysis, and achieves certain reductions, and it may differ from project to project what the actual number is, but it's a percentage of the overall reduction. And if you wanted us to look into the details of that, we could do that on a project-by-project basis.
Okay. Well, I appreciate just what you addressed, Todd, and I guess I would just say, I think it is important, because otherwise you get this raw number that says, well, it's, you know, two times plus higher than it is just down the road or across the road in another plan area, and, you know, and even with an explanation behind, well, maybe there's more trails, you know, per, you know, per the assigned units in any given development, but I think it goes deeper than that. It goes back to, you know, analyses that are now required under, I guess, both SEQA, but certainly under state law in order to analyze projects, and like, as you said, to see how they address both the greenhouse gases, but also the VMT, and still provide for accommodation for various modes of travel. And so I, not so much I was necessarily seeking out a number, but I think it's important, because otherwise, when we get in these conversations and we're just talking about fees and how it relates to a given area, that in order to actually have projects even get to the, past the planning stage, there has to be some accommodation within the framework, and it has a cost assigned to it. Obviously, that's borne by the development, ultimately by the property owners in those developments, but it's not just simply a fee in linear foot, there's more, there's more to it, and that was my point. And so I guess, not to cask you with any more work at this juncture, but I think by way of reference, and if there is some ability, and you know, we're going to see more projects before this board over time, and with the VMT, you know, maybe that can be built into some of the discussions, so that for the record, it's there, so that whether it's this board or future boards, and certainly, you know, the current staff and current development community, that there's some understanding that that's why you have some of this differential. It doesn't account for everything in all the charts, but certainly from this component, which is an important one, so. And I mean, if that could be done fairly simply with, you know, but because you're doing, running these models and so forth, I think it might be useful, because at least it provides good background for trails, how we calculate it, you know, the costs associated, but also then the value that is added or gained, because in order to do, in order to gain approval projects, you've got to have these, you know, calculations, and the SEQA documents have to, you know, meet muster as do the transportation plans, so.
Yeah, I certainly understand the line of questioning and the reasons behind it. I also want to validate what Bob said earlier about the county's general plan policies that they relate to new growth outside the UPA. We've got a very robust set of policies in LU 120, really aimed at smart growth and trying to reduce VMT compared to historical land use planning practices. So all that is wrapped up into the efforts with the large master plans like Mather South and those along the Jackson Corridor and in Natomas, but I certainly understand where you're coming from. And we can probably elaborate on that in future.
And we're going to see the climate action plan at some juncture, we had a similar workshop, but again, this is a component of that, and certainly one that I know that I've heard from different parties on as it relates to the VMT and, you know, where growth occurs and how it's permitted and so forth. So again, I just, it's very relevant. I appreciate your adding to the conversation, and so I do think that, more than just a footnote that as we go along over time, we ought to, you know, at least keep it in mind, because it factors in, obviously, to the costs that are associated with the development, but also it factors into how those developments can proceed or not, by virtue of meeting, you know, meeting requirements that are part of state law, and certainly will probably be further embedded in our climate action plan at some juncture beyond the general plan, which we'll have to line up as well. So anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Todd. Appreciate it. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Supervisor Natoli. Okay, I guess this time we're ready to, I believe Chris Norm was our next speaker. Good morning, Mr. Norm. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Chris Norm, North State BIA. I'm actually going to have Jamie Gomes go first, and he's going to present the fee study that we performed earlier this year, and then I'll have some additional comments following him.
Great. May I have the overhead? Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jamie Gomes with Economic and Planning Systems. A pleasure to be here today and help inform, provide some information related to this topic. For those of you who are not aware, EPS is an urban land economics consulting firm. We specialize in public finance, real estate economics, regional economics, and land use policy, and we've done development impact fee work throughout the, throughout the state in California, and then land economics work throughout the United States. In the context of today's topic and workshop, EPS recently completed a comprehensive report examining the infrastructure cost burdens for residential projects, both within the Sacramento region and then also as compared to other regions within California, and then metro areas outside of the state of California. And so for today's discussion, I'm going to use the terminology "infrastructure cost burden," and by that, what I mean is development impact fees, the estimated cost of backbone infrastructure, development exactions, so things that may be required through a development agreement. So Bob alluded to there are certain costs that are imposed. They may not be quantified in an impact fee, but there's still a cost to provide the backbone infrastructure for new development. And then also, as Bob mentioned, where there is land-secured financing, such as a CFD, that it does not overlap with a fee, all of those things we've quantified in our infrastructure cost burden analysis. So the brief presentation I have today is going to highlight the overall infrastructure costs per unit, looking at selected projects throughout the region, that infrastructure cost burden as a percentage of home sale price, as Bob's slides had indicated. And then as part of our report, we also evaluated ways in which you can categorize fees, and I'll dive into that categorization and how it might help inform policy decisions that your board may choose to make. And then I'll conclude with some brief impact, impact fee implementation considerations. So the presentation really is intended to be informative related to the topic and the workshop today. Let me get straight to the point. Here are several of the findings that we had in our, in our analysis. Certainly, it's no surprise to you, California municipal finance paradigm just creates a very heavy reliance upon impact fees and development exactions in order to fund the infrastructure that is needed to serve new growth. So that's a given, just because of Prop 13 and all of the outcomes from that. When we did compare the Sacramento region to other regions, the total infrastructure cost burdens in cost burdens in the Sacramento region are higher than other California regions, and then also other regions outside of the state. Impact fees, as you know, are really kind of a double edged sword, in that you need adequate fees and backbone infrastructure in order to serve new growth, so that adequate services are provided, you're complying with regulatory requirements. But at the same time, if the fees are very robust or exorbitantly high, they can be a deterrent to new growth and to economic development aspirations. And as summarized in the last two bullets, and briefly alluded to, I think during your board conversation during the previous presentation, despite recent rapid home price escalation, there are rising costs and other looming headwinds, such as interest rate increases, cost of materials increasing, that are outside of just this development impact fee realm, that are putting pressure on housing feasibility going forward. And again, as no surprise to you, as the price of housing and the cost of housing continues to go up, it has a really deleterious impact on housing affordability. So obviously, major concerns and, and things to keep in mind. And then lastly, key findings perspective. Overall, when looking at projects throughout the Sacramento region, the average infrastructure cost burden is about $95,000 per unit, whereas for selected projects within the Central Valley and the Inland Empire, it's approximately $55,000 per unit. And I can, if you would like, I can describe what those differences were. And then in nearby Placer County, the average infrastructure costs and fees are about 87, so a little under $90,000 per door. So as was mentioned, everything that's reflected here is a point in time, so it's the point in time impact fees that were in place when the study was conducted. And similarly, EPS used third party data sources, the Gregory Group, and other online data sources to derive a cost per square foot, and then for the prototype that we used, which is the same prototype for all development projects, the estimated sales price. So again, point in time, the economy is dynamic and it's going to vary. What this slide does illustrate, and the coloring is similar to how Bob had depicted it, on the left-hand side, we have jurisdictions within the Sacramento region, organized by county, and in the middle, we have an average for the greater Sacramento region. And then, as our report was more comprehensive, on the right-hand side, you have Central Valley, Inland Empire, and other states.
Excuse me, Jamie. Supervisor Kennedy had a question.
Yeah, on that slide, thank you, Chair. On that slide, you touched upon, toward the right side are outside of California. How much of this can be attributable to the regulatory environment in the state?
Yeah, it's twofold. It's regulatory compliance, number one, and then in addition, they have property tax, they have the ability to increase property taxes.
Because of Prop 13.
And use that to fund infrastructure.
Because they don't have Prop 13.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right. They're not constrained in the same, in the same manner.
Got it. Thank you.
Those are the two primary drivers. So again, I think, I can't overstate, as Bob alluded to, this is a metric. It's in a way in which you can evaluate the infrastructure burdens, but isn't, it is not an absolute diagnostic yes or no regarding feasibility. There are so many other costs and factors that go into the land economics for housing, that this has proven to be a very good indicator, but again, it's not an absolute yes or no. So the area in green between 0 and 15%, that's areas where if the cost burdens fall within that range, projects are likely to be feasible, should not have any challenges. In the yellow area between 15 and 20%, there's the potential for feasibility challenges depending upon other land development costs and other factors. And then those that are 20% or above, that's where we're likely to see feasibility challenges, unless there are atypical circumstances that offset that. So for example, if the land basis is zero, then you might see a project that has a burden at 20% potentially feasible. Now, we don't often find projects with a land basis of zero, but I'm just trying to use that as a point of illustration. So next we have the Placer, sorry, we have some detail on Sacramento County. And so this dives in a little bit deeper, and it's similar to some data that Bob had shown, where we have different, all of these projects, with the exception of Empire Ranch, they're all greenfield projects and either actively developing or entitled but not yet started. Empire Ranch is all but built out, so it really is, is an outlier on this chart, and you can see by the way in which the cost burdens are depicted, the regulatory environment was different, the requirements of the project were different, and then the fees were established probably 15 or 20 years ago for, for that project, if not longer. The jurisdictions represented here are both within incorporated cities as well as the unincorporated county. And if you take, again, if you take the Empire Ranch outlier out of the equation, as you can see, the cost burdens are ranging about 17 to just over 22%, but all within a relatively narrow band. For Placer County, we have a similar depiction, again, projects in incorporated cities as well as in the unincorporated county. The two projects on the left happen to be infill projects within the city of Lincoln. The rest of them are greenfield projects. But the combination of slightly higher average home prices and slightly lower cost burdens per unit, you can see the, the result is that the cost burden per sales price is a little bit lower, so a little closer to the green as compared to a little closer to the red. As I mentioned earlier, you know, if we look at the top half, this is the metric we've been talking about, the infrastructure cost burden as a percent of home sale price. But if we look at the bottom half, another element of the report that we prepared was thinking about the impact fees and cost burdens from a policy perspective. So we organized the information in a way where you could categorize costs into essential, critical, desirable, and other. So the other would be those building and permit, building permit and processing fees that Bob showed at the very bottom of this slide, that were very low and relatively constant. That's in the other category. And school fees, we have as categorized as other. But when you think about essential, those are, facilities are required primarily by regulatory requirements or regulatory compliance, water, sewer, storm drainage. You can't have new development unless you have those wet utility services available. Then critical infrastructure includes, and there is no clear black line between these two, there's a gray, obviously, in between, but critical infrastructure, in our analysis, we included transportation, transit, public safety facilities, and then facilities for governmental functions. And then desirable are those things that amenitize a community, they're very valuable assets to a community, but they are more discretionary. They may not be required by regulatory compliance. So those things are parks, libraries, open space, trails, and other public amenities, museums, you know, et cetera. So we found that just organizing and categorizing the costs in this manner, if you determine that there, the cost may be too high, or costs may need to be addressed, this is a helpful lens through which to prioritize your efforts. We did have a detailed example of this type of analysis for the North Inyard Station project. There's a lot going on, on this slide, but just briefly, we've depicted the essential, critical, desirable, and other on the left-hand side, and the essential represents about a third of the cost burden. The critical is about 25%, as is other, being schools and permit and processing fees. And then desirable is about a sixth of the cost, about 17%. And then on the right side of the slide, we've depicted how much of the cost burden is within the control of the county or county-controlled agencies. So in the North Inyard Station example, about 71% or just under three quarters of the fees are within the county's purview. About 18% of that burden is, is the school districts, and then about 11% of it is special districts like park and recreation. So in conclusion, in our report, we did also identify some fee implementation considerations. Certainly, the board has priorities for the county, and so you will set your policy objectives to align with those priorities, and that can apply also to the way in which you address cost burdens. Correctly calibrating the demand factors for essential services, in the North Inyard Station example, the essential services comprised about a third of the costs. If we think about new water efficient features, drought tolerant landscaping, low water demand landscaping or irrigation, and all of those technological advancements may, or are seeking to reduce the amount of consumption per house. So if the master plans for your backbone infrastructure facilities, like your water treatment plants and storage and conveyance, if they are reflecting the new design standards, then the costs and the facilities should be calibrated, and that may reduce fees, or at least keep costs of fees in check. So that's what's meant by that second bullet. As your board has done previously, you've phased in fee increases over time to help the land economics adjust to that fee. Fees have been deferred, obviously, and during different periods of the economic cycle, the time period within which fees are due can vary. Prioritizing essential projects that are critical to serving new service populations. There was discussion regarding road priority or transportation priorities in a certain portion of the county, and so that's at the purview and at your will as a board to prioritize the investments that are most important. And then obviously, I think, certainly looking to leverage regional, state, and federal sources with the new Infrastructure Act, there may be additional funding that could be available to help mitigate some of the costs to serve new development.
Excuse me, Jamie. Supervisor Desmond had some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question, on one of the charts you showed in Sacramento County, you specifically referenced that these are really in the context of greenfield development. In terms of your considerations, would you add any additional considerations when we're talking about infill development, or are these still pretty?
If I, let me make sure I understand the question. With respect to the cost burden and whether projects are feasible within those ranges?
That, well, I'm more interested, just on this slide, are there any other fee implementation considerations that you would add, just really with a focus on encouraging infill development?
Oh, yeah, yeah, certainly. Yeah, infill, infill development projects certainly do face their own set of challenges. Sometimes you, you find out that the infrastructure that you think is there and adequate to serve isn't adequate, so there's a lot of surprises in that regard. So one way, one thing that I've seen is imposing impact fees maybe on a per acre basis. So that incentivizes density, because the same amount of acre can accommodate more units. So that's, that's an example. Certainly, and as we now will be facing with AB 605, development impact fees on a per square foot basis. And it doesn't apply to all impact fees, but as you have seen micro units or smaller units within an infill area, that's another example.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm available for questions if there are any additional.
Thank you, Jamie. Supervisor Kennedy did have a question.
Just at the very end there, thank you, Chair. You mentioned a shift in state law to go to fees based on square footage. Can you, can you elaborate on that?
Oh, sure. There's a new, new law that was passed, so any new impact fee that's adopted after, I believe it's July 1 of next year, of 2022, the impact fee nexus study either needs to implement the fee on a per square foot base, or include findings as to why that may not be technically possible. That law does exclude specifically fee capacity charges, such as water capacity and sewer capacity charges, so those aren't wrapped up in that law, but, yeah.
And is it triggered by, you know, a board making changes, or does it have to happen? I mean, is, does it only kick in when we look at changing fees, or is it something that's going to be applied universally to those areas?
Yeah, I believe it's prospective, so if you have an impact fee that's in place now and it isn't changing, then that trigger date doesn't require an action, but for any new impact fee after that timeframe.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the questions. Good morning, Mr. Norm.
Good afternoon, or good morning. Chris Norm, North State BIA. Thanks for having us today. Very much appreciate the board's interest in not only the housing crisis, but the willingness to dig into this issue and look closely at it.
All right, Chris, can you pull the microphone up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks. There you go. Thank you. Thank you for leveraging me to that. I just want to say how much we appreciate the board's interest in this topic of the housing crisis, as well as this, the fee burden, and the board's willingness to dig in and look closer at it. And I also wanted to thank the county staff for their willingness to talk to us and engage with us on an ongoing basis, as well as most recently on this topic. So we very much appreciate the board's attention to this. I wanted to, in addition to talking about these things, I'll mention that just recently, we actually conducted a poll on housing and business issues that we're actually releasing somewhat this week, but I'll share it with you, that 78% of respondents actually thought that the policymakers in the region should be looking at the high fee burden of $100,000 a unit and be working to bring these things down, just as you are. So that was in the county of Sacramento and incorporate areas, as well as the city of Sacramento. So the public sees this issue as something that's very topical and timely. I wanted to discuss some of the things that we had identified here and that we've talked to staff about. These are some, also some ideas that I've heard the board enunciate in the past weeks and months. And so, one issue there, short-term policy options, we talked about, about having board transparency. One of the issues that came to the fore in the discussion of the CRPD fee was that the board is often tasked with approving one nexus study or one fee at a time, and not looking at the entire composite of what's doing to a project and the feasibility. So I think having a discussion about that particular nexus study in the context of a project or a plan area and how it fits in, so the board is actually very well informed about what they're doing and what the overall fee burden looks like, would be one option that we would hope that the board would potentially give some verbal direction to staff, or ask the staff to come back with some suggestions on more formalizing of these policies. Second there, item B, is lowest possible fee when there's a range of fees that are potentially available to the county, and working with special districts or, or other parties when providing services, that the, the understanding is that you'd like to get it to be the lowest possible, that would, that would meet the needs of the community. Oftentimes, with infrastructure, you do have the capacity to, I'm going to build a larger water system, a water, larger sewer system, I'm going to be able, you know, a variety of, of community amenities, and in the current context of the housing crisis, it's reasonable to say, let's look at trying to keep that on the lower side. We can always adjust it later if we wanted to, but the policy going forward to the staff and to us is, when we're looking at these things, like try to come up with, you know, the lowest possible angle to that. And total project fee load, as you heard Bob talk about and Jamie talk about there, you know, the 20% mark is the rough approximate area where we start to have projects with real problems. So I think that having a fee, a policy that says that, you know, our goal is to try to not exceed 20% or to reach the regional median as a goal for a fee, and that when we're developing projects in coordination with the staff, if we get to a point where we have high fee loads, we need to, you know, either go back and try to rework that, or when we bring those projects forward to you, present some alternatives and say, hey, we're over 20%, but here are some options for the board to consider to bring that down if it's the will of the board. So I think those would be options that we would endorse. I want to emphasize on item C there is that, you know, we don't want to have the fee load and the fee cost be an enemy of progress. So if we get to applicants that say, hey, I know it's at 21% or 22%, but the way this project is structured, we want to go ahead. We want to bring it to the board. I mean, because the goal, I think, for us and the board is to get units pulled out of the ground and get people in housing. So if the applicant is saying, we're good with this, we should be able to proceed. So not letting this policy become, you know, a burden and a barrier to the overall goals that everyone's trying to reach together, I think is our objective. And so those are the things that we're hoping that the board could, could speak to and provide some direction to staff. We're willing to continue to work with the staff on developing. We're willing to continue to work with the staff on developing some policy options or take whatever direction you might offer. On item number two there, long-term policy options, I think Bob alluded to this, is that we've, we already have a monthly working group with the board staff, I'm sorry, with the board, with the staff, and we've identified these particular areas as topics where we'd like to go a little bit deeper, have some discussions, and potentially bring back some policy options to you, working with Bob and Ron Vacari, others on the staff who are willing to talk to us. So over the next year or so, we would dig into those and bring them back topics for you guys to consider. So that's going to conclude my topic, or my comments for the day. Happy to answer any questions. If not, I'll turn it over to Phil Rodriguez, who is a developer in the region, who's done a lot of projects, as well as with the county, and has the Mather South project, and I thought he could provide some good commentary and context for you.
Thank you, Chris. I see no questions, so we'll proceed to Phil. Good morning. How are you, Phil?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Phil Rodriguez with the Lewis Group of Companies and also representing the North State BIA. Hello to all your fellow supervisors. It's good to see you. I took my mask off so you can see my smiling face because it's been a long time. But seriously, Chris asked me to provide some comments. I'll provide some color commentary, basically from a developer's perspective. And, you know, the challenge we face with impact fees is a double-edged sword. Our industry, we want to pay fees because those fees go towards facilities that we don't want to build or we can't build, you know, water treatment plants, major roadways, you know, wastewater facilities, schools, parks. So we applaud that. And the reason for impact fees, as was discussed earlier, is the way that the tax structure is for property tax for local jurisdictions due to Prop 13. We see in our neighboring state, where we do have divisions of our development team in Nevada and Reno, where they have extremely low fee burdens per door because the state funnels money down to those local jurisdictions based upon property tax values. And so annually, those property tax values go up, and so do the taxes in the local jurisdictions, and the state goes and builds facilities. But we live in a different paradigm here in California, and we all understand that. And so, but what we try to avoid is getting into situations where the fee burdens are so high that we run the risk, and Supervisor Serna, you mentioned it in your questions, where, you know, we end up in a seller's market and a buyer's market. And we never want to buy high in a seller's market, buy land that's loaded down with fee burdens, because we know real estate is a cyclical cycle. It goes up and down, and we'll end up in a situation where we're underwater. And so we, all we ask is local jurisdictions, when they're preparing their fee studies, is to be reasonable, as if you were in the private sector building things, and value engineer just like we would do so. And that's why we scrutinize nexus studies for fees, whether it's schools, parks, engineering, everything under the sun. A couple of things I'll point out, really, that are, I think, most of you do consider, and I think, you know, everybody in the audience and even in the public would consider, is there are other forces out there. Supervisor Nattoli, you mentioned, you know, open space preservation and wetland preservation. Every project is different, whereas some may not have any and could sustain a high fee burden, whereas others, master plan, greenfield development, they do typically have some level of preservation requirement. Mather is very unique in that we have a significant burden, and that burden comes with costs, cost to construct facilities, cost to maintain in perpetuity, where we have to fund the long-term preservation and management plans associated with these preserves. And that adds to that burden on new development. Every homeowner, every apartment dweller has to pay for that over time. Other factors involved, and we, you know, we all read the paper, we all read the news, you know, there's an affordability crisis in California with respect to housing, and folks are looking for solutions to that. And oftentimes, it comes on the backs of new development, because we're the ones standing here wishing for something. We need approval, and you've got folks that say, we want you to give something. Well, it's hard to give when you don't have, right? And so when these other fees are out there floating up to go build things that the local jurisdiction would go build, we are impacted because we can't move anymore with respect to providing some level of subsidy or ability to provide something in the project for affordable housing. Another factor that we're dealing with right now is climate change. The county's finally, you know, moving forward with their cap, the Climate Action Plan. We and Mather South, we self-mitigated, came at an extreme burden, the costs associated with that, but we agreed that's the only way to move the project forward to get approved. Thankfully, the county is, you know, completing the cap, but it's really the same, it's really the same things that we self-mitigated for. Those items are expensive to implement, and implementation is really because they're not the norm, right? So you start the project and you have to really, you know, you have to really spend a lot of cash outlay to make things happen initially and hope that it works over time. For projects such as Mather South, these are 15-year projects. This isn't something that happens in three years and we move on to the next one. So we always have to think about the long-term, the long-term cash flow impacts. Another item to mention, I could talk for hours, but I think most of you understand all of these things, but, you know, when we start a project, there's an extreme burden upfront for all the things we have to build to serve the balance of the project. We just can't pick and choose what we want to build. We have to build facilities, off-site facilities, roadways and whatnot, infrastructure, you know, pipelines for natural gas or electric lines for electricity. So we have all of these burdens that we have to consider, and the burden test that we use is just that, the fee burden test, the 20% mark. All that does as we come into a project is let us know if we've got a problem, the red light's on. It doesn't take into consideration all the other things we have to deal with, whether or not it's in the development of the land, it's remediation or hazardous material removal, an off-site facility we have to build, an interchange on the freeway we have to participate in. That doesn't, that feasibility test doesn't include all of that, but every project has its issues. So I wanted to give you some color, basically, and expand upon what Jamie and Chris spoke to, and I'm happy to answer questions and engage with you. I know time is of the essence, you've got a big agenda today, but I'm here if you need me, and I do want to say one thing with Bob. We have met with county staff for years, that the challenge is, is they have policies that boards dictate to them, you know. Todd touched on land use policies. That's important. There are other policies that they have to follow. So it's what we often say when we end up with, at an impasse, it's not, it's not the good people that are working in the brick building, it's the policies that the decision-makers have put on them, that they're trying to enforce and follow, right? And in the county staff's defense, there are other districts, other special agencies they have to deal with, that they don't, they're not, they're, they can't tell them what to do, how to scrutinize their impact fee programs. So a whole host of things we have to consider, and I'll stop rambling, but I just wanted to give you some color.
Excuse me, Phil. Don, Supervisor Nattoli had comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Phil, for your comments, and certainly for your work over the years on certainly Mather South, but other projects in the county. Appreciate your leadership, certainly within your organization, within the Building History Association, but also working with Lewis Homes and development projects. I wanted to ask, and again, again, not to get sidetracked, but certainly, as we looked at the charts, and that's what my comments earlier were about, Mather South and kind of where that fell, and all the calculations that, given you've addressed, and certainly Jamie and Chris in their comments as well. I'm just curious, when it comes to Mather South, and to your point, it is unique, and again, we recognize that, and that's, you know, some of the value, no question about it, but I'm curious in your analysis, because to your point where other projects with the countywide Habitat Conservation Plan will have to pay fees per acre for affected acres and so forth, and the uniqueness of certainly Mather South, the portion that obviously you will, you know, develop over time under the current arrangement, but then the set aside. Have you, could you maybe just share without getting too much specific into, you know, anything that's proprietary, but I mean, how does that weigh out? Because again, I raise the point, you've heard me, you know, I've talked about this in the past, about how that gets factored in, which that's a business transaction, but then there's, to your point, you know, what your project, in addition to what's been charted there, will have to bear, and I'm just curious, as you look around you, just in the general area, certainly in the corridor, but elsewhere, other projects you're having to pay Habitat Conservation, you know, and/or mitigate, self-mitigate and set aside, and all that comes out of the land basis and so forth. So I'm just curious, you think you could shed some light on just how that impacts your overall calculation on this? Because you're certainly on the chart are at the highest, at least in the briefer chart, but there are some other things that go into it as well. So your project, as well as other projects that aren't calculated, so.
Yeah, the perfect project would have, you know, have no wetlands on it, right? And we would be able to develop every square inch of the property, but unfortunately, that's not the case. We have, there's the federal regulatory rules with respect to wetlands, the state regulatory rules with respect to wetlands, we have to, we have to solve all of that, right? And so, as it applies to Mather South, I mean, the county has worked diligently for years, working with the federal government agencies on preservation, creating the large open space preserve that's out there right now. We included more preservation within the Mather South property, but that's not the end of it. We still have to go, as a part of the permits and the environmental impact statement that the county processed with the Army Corps of Engineers, we still have off-site mitigation that we, that we require. We have to buy mitigation credits or go preserve more land elsewhere by buying a conservation easement. That comes at a cost. And oftentimes, believe it or not, those mitigation bank credits cost just as much per acre as new development. It could be because it's a commodity, right? And those folks that have those mitigation banks, they know that. And so, that's an expense that's not discussed. That's a unique item. It's very similar, as I mentioned earlier, as if we find a project that's infill, right? And I'll give you an example. We have a project in the city of Lincoln where we worked with the city for about 15 years on the remediation of an old wastewater treatment plant. The city cleaned it up, came at a great expense to the city, and then we worked with them on an acquisition of that project. Well, that, that, all of the costs, the city, the burden to remediate affected the land value, right? And so, we turned that property around, and now it's a thriving, growing master plan, mini-master plan community. But that's an example of remediation in an infill environment. It was really infill, but there are other places. In the city of Sacramento, for instance, we were involved in the Creamery project. That required a lot of remediation. And so those are factors that folks don't see, that those are costs that are applied to the project from day one, before we do anything. And then we have to work with the local jurisdiction on controlling the fee burden, because it's a unique situation applicable to every project. I wish that every product project was the same, but they're not. I learn something every day with every project that I had no idea I was going to learn 25 years ago when I started this business. But so those are, those are unique factors that folks just don't understand. And I appreciate you, appreciate you bringing that up.
Good. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Our next speaker is Ron Vacari.
Chair Frost, members of the board, Ron Vacari, Director of Transportation. I think a lot has been said up to this point, so I think I'll just be brief and conclude this by saying, and give some examples, but I'll try to be brief here. I want to express my gratitude and thanks to and appreciation to Chris, Jamie, Phil, but also Holger, Mike Whipple, and many of the other development interests that have helped us get where we are. But I also want to be pretty clear that, or really clear, that we know that there's a lot of work to be done, and there is a path forward. So I'm just briefly going to talk about some of the successes real quick that we've had, but also set the framework for what we see working together as a group to be our path forward in ways that we can accomplish even more. So without the development team's interest, and some that you've heard from, and also a lot of others that have been working with us, just from a transportation perspective alone, we updated the SCTF in 2019, but along with it, we brought a credit reimbursement agreement that was a success and couldn't have been done without their help. We've developed a dynamic implementation tool to be able to deal with new developments and be able to respond to priorities as they come up, and really has, has kind of relieved the burden as developments move forward. And it also allows developers within close proximity to each other to share in some of these burdens that we're talking about. So that was definitely a large success. Developments that have been conditioned over the past decade, we've gone back and we've started to look at what can we do there. Your board approved in 2020 the Floren Vineyard Community Plan to get us 1,325 units so we could move forward and get that project going. Why, we continue to work with the development interests to get a path forward for the remainder, but at least we unlocked that piece. North Vineyard Station, you'll be seeing soon, it was just at the CPAC a couple months ago, we've been able to free up 400, oh, sorry, 4,000 units so that that development can start to move forward as we begin to look at how we fix these areas that are, and work together to come up with a better solution. Alberta, which is our most challenging, I know you hear a lot of, we hope to be to the board in the springtime with what we see now, we think is at least 1,250 units, hopefully 1,750 units, to allow that development to move forward as we continue to work on these items. So I do want to say that, in working with the BIA, and I think you've heard it expressed here, we, as staff, recognize that we do, that there is areas that we can approve upon, there's areas that, working together, that they can bring out that we're not aware of. So we're very much encouraged to start this process, starting in January, where we, as staff, are going to be dedicated to being open to all areas, to be able to look into every, some of the areas that came up. I will say, when we reached out initially, I reached out to Chris to get some, to get some topics, highest priority topics for these meetings as they start in January, asked for a couple of topics. I think I received eight. I think today in this board hearing, I've heard a couple more, so I do think we're absolutely going to hit the ground running, so that number may be starting off initially in January as 10 items that we can look at. But we have had success over the years, and I very much look forward to starting that process in January, and I do think that we'll continue to have success. And as you see, it was mentioned, I'll just conclude by saying, it was mentioned that in 2009, 2011, that effort, some were frustrated, we didn't find any big things, but we found a lot of little things that led to up to 17% decrease in fees in some areas. And when you looked at both what Bob presented and what Chris presented, or what Jamie presented, you can see that that can be the difference between whether a project's feasible or not feasible. So those little things added up to something that I would think is very significant. So I look forward to the process beginning in January, and certainly as staff, we have staff here from all departments. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ron. Supervisor Nattoli.
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Thank you, Ron, and certainly to county staff and to our private sector interests and partners. I just want to make a comment, though, and I think it's important because it goes back to the charge that you all are given by virtue of what this board interacts on behalf of the people of this county. And it's not to lose sight of, certainly, the need to look at efficiencies, to look at costs associated with amenities, either that, you know, using different vernacular here, but whether they're essential or their quality of life. But, you know, the public trust is placed within all of us, certainly, we five as electeds, but certainly through the county executives, through the various department heads, and all the folks that carry out the policies, and those were referenced, because I think that's a key piece, too, and not to lose sight of that. And I trust that your discussions, just as folks are looking at trying to bring more product, you know, into the marketplace and to, you know, meet, you know, some of the demands that are out there, that are recognized, not just in this county, in this region, but certainly throughout the state. There is that balance that goes with this, and certainly, it's in my mindset, as we look at, you know, projects, that, not to forget the experiences we had in this county that go back now several decades, but nonetheless, where the build got out way ahead of the ability for the county and/or anything that was an obligation of development at the time to keep up. And certainly with the transportation network, but also, you know, there was a scramble on schools and to some degree, some of the other infrastructure. I think we're much better positioned, certainly because of the work that's been done, and I think the cooperation that that has seen, and obviously, part of the discussion here today goes on, do we do a constant assessment of both the need, but certainly the requirements and how we can either fine tune or address certain issues. But I just wanted to make the point that certainly, you know, in my experience over the years, that, you know, you try to seek that balance, and, you know, and I think one of the comments that Mr. Norm made relative to the context of all that is that to the context of all that is that, you know, these are not isolated and that, you know, whether they layer on or not, they all factor in. And I just think it's really important, though, that, as I mentioned in the previous item, that once the houses are there and people occupy them, they are the taxpayers, they're the ones that pay the mortgage, or they pay the rent. But the expectation is, and particularly if that's the way it was, was presented to folks, and sometimes maybe presumptive, but the expectation is, is that the roads will be in place. You'll have a safer environment for modes of travel, that you'll have schools in, in the neighborhood, that you will have parks in the neighborhood, you will have libraries over time, and that you, the water sewer and all the utility functions that people don't see, that those are going to be in place and that they're going to have a duration that will hopefully, you know, be a long one so that, as we saw today, we can retire some of that debt, the citizens do, the residents retire that debt. And those improvements are still there, and they're still functional, and they're, you know, then we're not looking at having to do major rehab or reinvestment at a 20 or 30-year period of time. And so I just wanted to make, to your point, though, that, that there is a public trust that's, you know, vested certainly with this body and with all the folks that carry out the public side of it. And, and part of public trust is to work with the private sector, who are the ones that actually build the housing, deliver the product, and, you know, ultimately pay and/or pass on the, the fees that go to those public amenities that are also a part of the public trust. And so I think that's, that's just an important point that I wanted to make because it is, as we constantly calibrate and look to, you know, find ways to, you know, offset those costs. And your department's a good example, as are other departments here, where you've been, you know, actively sought out, you know, funding at the regional level, at the state and national level, and that helps complement some of the things that we would otherwise have to provide for and would be, be a burden to folks, you know, ultimately to homeowners and renters and others. But certainly becomes, you know, a, a potential obstacle for development. So I just wanted to point that out, Ron. And I know you take that seriously, as do others. But it's a part of the balance in this equation as well, so.
I appreciate that. And it is that balance that is so difficult to achieve that we're, and I think that balance is what, what we're all striving to achieve. And I think that's the reason why everything has to be on the table, whether it's administrative fees, fee burdens, policies, really looking at everything that goes into making quality developments within the unincorporated county and, and really meeting that balance and making sure infrastructure is put in place to support that. I think it's on all of our best interests, so I definitely do look forward to the process.
And because ultimately, those are our neighborhoods and business districts that, you know, will hopefully stand the test of time. But there's, you know, real people that are represented by this board and by other, you know, elected officials, and certainly by the, the staff that are, that are charged with that. And ultimately, we have to, we take those into the public domain, and it's forever and all time is our responsibility to, to, to maintain and see to those facilities. And again, to have a way to offset those costs over time. But thanks for your comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. So, you know, I, first of all, I have to say how, how pleased I am with the spirit that I'm seeing here today, and not just from our staff, but from BIA and, and all the interested parties. I think I, I feel like we're moving in the right direction of cooperation. And there was, in my opinion, over the years, not just recently, but over the years, a little too much them and us. And I think that we're now going forward as, as we. And, and I, I'm, I'm proud of the county for, for taking that, that position and, and really embracing that psyche. I do think that personally, that the, the shortlist that the BIA presented is reasonable and all good things that, to base conversations on. And so I hope that that will go forward that way. I will tell you that, you know, a lot of you have heard me tell the story, and I'll tell it again, that back in the mid 90s, when I was on the Sacramento City Planning Commission for 11 years, there was, you know, some very loud protestations, particularly by Mr. Oates, by Buzz Oates, that, you know, I will never do business in the city of Sacramento again. And, you know, and, and that was really felt across the board with the development community at the time. The, the city took that to heart and saw that as, you know, we've got a problem here. And, you know, looked holistically at how to change practices and policies. So it's, and, and they did that, and they did it in fairly short amount of time. And that's where I'm hoping we're heading. This isn't just about fees, though fees is obviously important when you look at the, the level of fees that we have. It's not just about fees. It's also the way we do business, the way we, you know, practice. And so, you know, and I spoke with, with Ann yesterday about this, that I really hope that we will go forward and even look at and consider bringing in some outside eyes. I hate to use the, the nasty consultant word, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, we should take advantage of some expertise that's out there and look at what we can do and how we can change practices. You know, this isn't just a question of rearranging the check, the, the chairs on the deck, you know. I, I think we need to, you know, really look across the board at how we can be better at, at doing this business. And so that, because, I mean, we all, I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but we get calls regularly about how it's just too hard to do business with the county of Sacramento. So I, I really appreciate the spirit in which this is progressing, and I hope it continues. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly want to echo my, my colleagues' sentiments articulated much better than I could. But I thank you, Ron, and Bob, and Leanne, and Todd. And it was great to hear from, from Phil and Chris as well. I, just to pile on with what Supervisor Kennedy said, yeah, this is, seems to me, this is much more than just a fee discussion. It's about process structure and approach. And, and I would agree with that. I, I think it's always good to get maybe an outside disinterested look at, at the structures in the county. And I, as, as someone who doesn't really deal with the greenfield development in my district, well, my, my current district, anyway, it's all built out, so it's all infill projects. And I want to make sure we, we have a strategy for encouraging more or incentivizing more infill projects as well, and not just focusing on the greenfield development, which I think sometimes, at least that's the, the perception that are, that we're, we're very focused on that. And it just, it seems to me, you know, Bob, in the, in the presentation with the charts, it looks like it should be, it should be very feasible based on just fees to, to do these infill projects. It would be much cheaper. But what I'm hearing from infill developers all the time is the, the same sentiments that, that Buzz Oates talked about with the city. So we, we just can't deal with the county. So I don't know if that is related to fees or related to some of these other, other things that I, that I think should all be evaluated. Maybe it's related to, I mean, for, with respect to cost, maybe it's related to unique remediation requirements and things like that in some of these infill projects. But my sense is that it's more, it's just as much a structure, approach, a process question. So I hope we can really focus, have strategies for greenfield development and strategies for infill development. Ron, you and I talk about this a lot in the context of some opportunities, I think, from SA-COG for funding sources to revitalize aging corridors and thereby maybe stimulate some infill development along some of these areas. And so I certainly hope that is a big focus of your continued good work that you're doing with BIA and others. So, thank you.
And it absolutely is. It's, it's very important to us. And so that, that is already on, that's one of the nine or 10 that we're up to now. But it's certainly going to be a big focus. And I think we want to make sure, it's, it's very important to the county that we have solutions in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I just want to concur with all the comments that were made, and also just want to ask or clarify. So as you're moving forward next year and you're having these conversations with BIA and trying to identify efficiencies, will you be coming back with some recommendations for some policy that would, that we could look at? Because I, I also think that Chris Norm's, you know, brief summary of some possible policy, short-term policy options that would guide our mindset in our county, I'm wondering if, if that's where, where you're going with that. And I also want to ask if you can look at these other communities that have such lower fees to figure out, you know, why are ours so much higher? And maybe they, you know, maybe there are efficiencies or things they're doing that are better or more, you know, maybe. So.
Yes, to take the latter part of your question first, we will be looking at other areas, other jurisdictions to, to learn from those, and also hearing from the building industry of how it's being done in, in other areas. As for how it's going to come in front of the board as it rolls out, I see that, that there'll be a lot of different items that come up. Some will be clearly, you know, we're bringing back policies. But I think we are, we're going, going to try to reference this process so that the board sees along the way as we incrementally bring these things to the board, that this is a result of the process and, and to, so that you can keep track of the progress we're making and the success that we're making. So I think there'll be, it'll come in a couple of different ways. One, it'll come as a group of things as we, as we progress, and also in different items as we come to the board, such as the North Vineyard Station and, that I mentioned earlier, and other types of, that'll come incrementally.
Great. And I also want to thank you because it's true. We get calls all the time. And so the fact that you're working with BIA is really, I think it's a very positive move forward, and appreciate everything that you and your staff and BIA have contributed to this process. And thank you for bringing this workshop. It's very helpful. We have no more questions. And I wonder if we have any public comment on this?
We do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay. So this is a workshop, so there's.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Hang on one second. Could, I'm asking staff if they could please confirm if we have a caller. Can you transfer the caller? I apologize. We have one caller.
Sure.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is John Norman. I'm with Brookfield Residential. And I just wanted to add a comment, and I appreciate the discussion that has occurred regarding cost increases and mitigation costs and interest rates. But I, I wanted to point out that increased cost does not mean that we can just keep increasing the price of the home. It reduces the core market affordability. And when I say that, I'm, I'm saying that in regards to absorption. And that is one of the most important drivers for making a project successful. Static analysis doesn't address putting 20 to 50 million dollars out the door to start a project for infrastructure, et cetera. We need an even flow sales in order to make the project feasible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that concludes your public comments.
All right. I think we have some good direction to go, and I'm looking forward to next year as we work our way through this. And thank you, everyone, for being here to help us work through it. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 55 is the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Development Impact Fee Program Implementation. To approve the Cordova Recreation and Park District Development Impact Fee Program, introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 16.157 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the establishment of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Development Impact Fees. Wave full reading of the ordinance and continue to December 14th, 2021 for adoption, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Thank you, Flo. At this point, good afternoon, members of the board. Dorothy Codani. Yep, we just made it. Good afternoon, Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. This item was first presented on September 28th and continued to address issues from the North State Building Industry Association and the request for legal review of these issues. These issues were thoroughly addressed in previous communications and presentations to your board. At the October 19th hearing, the board inquired about the feasibility in regards to residential development and also requested the staff provide information on all fees applicable to development. That, that time, the public hearing and the park impact fee approval was continued to today's date. As we have always witnessed, we had a successful workshop and discussion on fees and feasibility. And so therefore, at this time, we'll just be providing some broad highlights and a summary of this proposed fee program. We also have present in the audience Mr. Patrick Larkin, the district's Cordova Recreation and Park District General Manager, and other members of the Park District Team who are available in the audience to address any questions. And so therefore, at this time, we are recommending a new park development impact fee to address needs as growth occurs in the district. The proposed program has been the result of many years of collaboration by county staff, district staff, the BIA, and the development community. And that included initial reductions of the, of the first proposals and a thorough analysis of the costs and methodologies that go into calculating the fee. We remind the board that general plan policies support park impact fees and Quinnby dedication and INLU fees. These policies require that master plans be built at higher densities than previous growth areas, which include more apartments and then missing affordable middle, smaller lot products. In exchange, the policy support a higher bar for amenities, which include parks. And therefore, the proposed fee implements the amenities and growths in new park master plan areas. And as previously mentioned, we have provided substantial evidence that the proposed fee conforms with the Mitigation Fee Act and has been accurately calculated. That concludes our brief presentation, and we're happy to address any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dorothy. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we have folks that, in addition to written correspondence that will likely wish to address the board today. But we did get written correspondence, both from the BIA but from Cordova Rec and Park District dated yesterday. And I don't necessarily expect that Dorothy would address it, but there are some issues raised in the letter from the BIA and the council on behalf of them. And I don't know that we've had a chance to do much analysis since there wasn't much time to, to do that. But I guess I would just maybe turn to Lisa if I could and just ask if you've had a chance to review that. Again, we haven't heard all of the, their verbal testimony. If you would want to wait until we have that, that's fine, too, Lisa, in order to weigh in. But just in light of the, where we are, and Dorothy's concluded her presentation, I wanted to ask that before we got into the public comments.
Sure. And as we discussed earlier this morning, my office received this letter from you this morning around 8:30. So no, we have not had a chance to fully analyze the issues raised in this latest correspondence from Abern and Kinderman. We have addressed other issues, as you all know, and found that the fee is supported by case law and statute. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if this raises new issues that need to be reviewed or need to be further researched. So because of the late submission of this, we weren't able to analyze it at this time.
So Lisa, you weren't sure if this raises new issues, but you haven't really had a chance to determine.
I think, I mean, based on my recollection of the meeting and the issues that were raised a couple of months ago, or a month ago or so, I don't know if it, I don't think it raises new issues. It's basically the same issues related to how you characterize the trails and how you characterize the shooting range, whether recreational facilities, community parks. But again, have not had a chance to delve into it in any great detail at this time.
Okay.
And I will say, it's unfortunate that we received it so late because if we would have had it earlier, we could have addressed it, but we didn't. So.
Okay. Thank you. And Dorothy, I just want to ask you, because again, you, you received this about the same time everybody else did, I guess. Is there anything else beyond what you had prepared for your staff report that you would want to address before we hear from speakers?
No, as far as the, as far as our presentation, the, actually, at this point, I have nothing more to add. Thank you.
All right. Then I'll, Matt, I'll hold questions. We have, you have some speakers I think signed up for, so we'll hear from folks and then go from there. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll, I'll probably also have some additional questions after we hear from all.
we hear from all the speakers, but just a few clarifying questions for me is on the, the park fee comparison, attachment three, it's one of the attachments, it's, that has not been revised, it appears, since we first heard this item, is that correct?
Correct, it has not been updated since the original.
And I think, I think a point I, someone raised at the last meeting where we discussed this was that for a few entries here, it has, it includes kind of the caveat, caveat or the statement that it doesn't include a certain amount for trails. For this CRPD fee, it should, it should say at the end, the 9107 amount does not include, what, $3,400 per unit for trails, is that, is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
Is it 3,400, okay, which I think is important to look at the entire fee picture, I mean, I think that's crucial in this case. And another question for, for county council is, and I know you haven't had a chance to review the documentation sent by BIA's attorney, but just procedurally, does, does this board have to vote up or down the amount in the NEXUS study or is there, does the board have discretion in the amount of fee to impose?
Well, you certainly can't vote up, you can't increase it based on the NEXUS study.
I mean, up or down, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant to make it more. Yeah, I mean, based on the case law and the press practices, yes, you should vote based on what is found in the NEXUS study.
And if this...
Unless amended, that's going to be an issue, if you choose another fee.
Okay, so that's, yeah, thank you for that. And so in other words, if we were to take action, if we wanted to take action on an amount lower than what's in the, we would, we would have to punt this again to come back and see if...
Right, because the calculations that have been done have been based on the studies and what is needed to support the infrastructure that the Rec and Parks District is planning on building at build out.
I think it's, and I'll just, before we get into the rest of the presentation, I think it's, I mean, I was hoping, since we've deferred this twice now, that we would come back and there would maybe have been some kind of compromise here in the fee, but it seems like there's, there's been no change, certainly in the course of, since September 28th, since we first heard this. So I just will say initially that I was a little surprised by that and hoping that maybe there would be some critical evaluation and we maybe could have come up with a different amount and been able to resolve this, but clearly that has not been the case, so. Thank you, and I look forward, well, go ahead Dorothy, did you, I don't know if you had a response to that, but...
Well, the only response would be is that as far as previous challenges and previous questions, they have been directed towards as far as supporting the numbers and the, and the information in the NEXUS study and so therefore, our approach has been to thoroughly review and vet the information in the NEXUS study. Of course, if we discovered something that needed amending or revising, we most definitely would have done that. However, being confident of the information that was first presented on September 28th, we, again, the approach was to further support the information that was originally provided and if anything was discovered during the, that review, we would have definitely provided that, but didn't find that warranted during our review.
And I appreciate that, I mean, you wanted to be confident in your position, I just think it would, from my perspective, I think it would have been helpful to see, look, if we, if a NEXUS study had, for instance, not included the gun range or, or not included certain elements in the Park District, what would that fee be, just, just so we could have seen some different hypotheticals, I guess, it would have been helpful to me. But, but anyway, I'll wait to hear the rest of the speakers and probably have some more comments and questions later, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So a question for county council, understanding that the correspondence from the BIA, including their analysis from Mr. Abbott, came so late, what, how much time do you think would be required for you and your staff to review their arguments and kind of comprehensively advise the board on, on the merit of their arguments?
Sorry, I'm just trying to get the eye of the attorney who's working on this issue. I mean, if you're asking if we can come back tomorrow, we can try. Again, if you want to come back next week, yes, of course, next week is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I appreciate Supervisor Serna's question, I'm going to get to that later on, but I think it's important to know that, and again, I know we have a short board next week as it relates to membership, who's going to be in attendance, so could be a compounding factor too. I did want to ask me, Dorothy, I neglected to a moment ago, in the correspondence, maybe separate or apart from, sort of integrated into the correspondence, but they raised the issue relative to management fee and again, kind of Supervisor Desmond's questions about what was taken into account, there, in the NEXUS study, there's a management fee and administrative fee or, and it may or may not be specifically referenced, and then there's the county administrative fee for collection and distribution of funds over time and those were all pointed out, I trust you saw the correspondence, is there anything you could add relative to that, not from the legal perspective as much as the, what you see in other studies, and again, it might be part of a comprehensive response back, but I'm just curious because those were points that were specifically went to the cost factor to the NEXUS study and such, beyond acreage and house calculated and so forth.
Thank you for asking that, actually, typical administrative fee and I did a quick review of the existing fee programs that I just previously did, presented the annual reports, a 4% is the typical fee as far as the, for administration, if that's what your...
And that's a county portion or that's a portion that the, the district that we collected for charges, because there's, there's two components to that, right?
Correct, so for this particular fee program, there's 3.5% for the Cordova fee and then there's 1.5% as was shown in the correspondence, for a total of 5%. And typical, what has typically been is three, anywhere from 3% to 5% in fee programs and the majority of our fee programs that we currently administer, it's 4%.
So that's, that's an average between the county and whatever the agency takes, it may, it may, it may be a different, it might be 2.5, 1.5, it may be 3, 1, whatever it is, but 4 is the average then for, is that just Park Districts or is that for other entities as well?
Well, actually, as far as like the North Vineyard Station fee, it's 4%, that's administered by our, by our group.
Right, we have the totality of that, but for South Gate, for example, using that as a comparison.
Oh, actually, I'm not sure as far as the administration for South Gate, we administer the program, remit the funds to South Gate and so actually, I don't believe there's a separate administration fee for South Gate for the program. Their costs come out of the amount that we remit to them for the program.
So there are differences and so again, if we, if we ask for a comprehensive response back, certainly from legal on this, that that may be something that you could then provide some, you know, identification behind that to, again, without going into a major re-study of it, but I think it would be helpful to have that because that was a question was raised, okay, thanks, thank you ma'am.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Right, were you, had you concluded your...
Yes.
Okay, we'll see if there are, we do have one public comment, Mr. Norm, do we have any phone calls?
We do not have any phone calls at this time.
And I do think the Park District, I don't know if they signed up, maybe they presumed that they were going to be given an opportunity, so, but certainly here for Mr. Norm, if that's how, you're the chair, you're going to do it in the order you want.
Would the Park District like to speak?
Certainly would, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Good afternoon, it felt like I was coming down for the prices right here, so thank you for having me again. I'm Patrick Larkin, the General Manager for Cordova Recreation and Park District. Thank you for having us again, this is obviously a very important fee for us to move forward with so that we do not delay any developers moving forward at this time. Some substantial evidence has been provided that the proposed CRPD park impact fee conforms with the Mitigation Fee Act and that that fee has been accurately calculated, as Dorothy mentioned. Sacramento County general plan policies support the park impact fees and Quimby dedication and in lieu fees as they require the master plans to be built at higher densities than previously growth, previous growth areas, including more apartments and more affordable middle and smaller lot products. In exchange, the policy supports setting an appropriate bar for those amenities, including parks. The proposed fee implements park facilities and amenities in new growth master planned areas. The calculation of the Quimby, current Quimby Parkland dedication requirement is 4.87 per 1,000 population. This is supported by the county's general plan and public facilities element and there are codes and sections in the policy that relate to it. I believe due to the late notice of the BIA's letter, which was frustrating to say the least, that we are here now again, having to possibly have a delay in a review of that, we wish we had had that information prior so that we could have addressed it. We're not ready at this time to respond to that from CRPD's legal perspective, but our lawyer is in the audience today and will be happy to work with county legal counsel to address those concerns. But on an overview of those concerns, just briefly looking at it, they are questioning the Quimby calculation and so in a nutshell, we'll have the legal group work on answering that question precisely to make sure that the county board of supervisors is confident with that information. Cost of utilities also, I just wanted to mention as we're talking about fees today, the cost of utility connections are drastically up, outpacing inflation. Therefore, in the 2021 NEXUS study, this fee is a real bargain, so let's do the prices right thing. The cost estimates for CRPD's new growth capital improvement plan were finalized in 2012. At that time, the water connection fees for the five acre neighborhood parks was valued at $100,000 or $120,000 in 2021 value. Currently, the connection fees through the Sacramento County Water Agency for a five acre park is $342,000. This is an increase of $222,000 higher than in 2012 and in the CRPD's 2021 NEXUS study. That is an approximate 40% of the cost of a playground or a large picnic area shelter in a neighborhood park. Park amenities will need to be reduced to adjust for these higher connection fees. The proposed program is the result of many years of collaboration by the county staff, CRPD staff, the BIA and the development community and thank you for your time today and if you have any questions I can answer for you, I'm more than happy to do so.
Ma'am Chair, if I just make a comment, I was going to ask, but it sounds like that obviously they've, the district's taking a look at that and they're going to have their legal counsel take a look at some of the questions that have been raised, so I was just, I think, the questions are posed out there, if I could just make one comment, I think it goes back to our discussion on the previous item, that we have a responsibility utilities and to make sure that water sewer and other things are available to the districts that we oversee and administer and sit on the boards of, but that's a pretty, you know, I think it points out, again, and those costs are development, developer pays those costs for single family homes, for apartments, for businesses, Park Districts pay costs too and you can look at what they factored in, obviously close to 10 years ago, nonetheless, if you look at, if you adjusted for inflation, what it'd be, and then you look at what the cost of connection, you know, that was a significant point and I just, I think it points out that everybody's affected by those costs, it's not just development community, but those that provide public facilities as well as the, the private sector folks, so. But I want to ask you another question, I think at this point in time, we have the correspondence and certainly Lisa and your council and others will, and our county staff will look to, you know, respond to us and I trust it's going to require us to put this over, so, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, thank you Supervisor Natoli. So Chris Norm, did you, I do have one public comment, Chris Norm, did you want to speak at this time?
Hi Chris Norm, North State BIA, thanks for having me up again. As our correspondence indicates, we have opposition to this item, we believe that the fee should be closer to the median average, which we had talked about in the last item. I wanted to state that, you know, we have been frustrated as well, dealing with this Park District, you know, after the last go around, I actually had even emailed their board chair, asking to sit down and talk to them and got no response. So I was not intending to trigger an entirely new round of legal analysis, I think that our objective, as we've mentioned, is to try to get it down, the fee down to a point where we feel like it's a workable, defensible fee for new homeowners, but that also provides the vital park services that everyone needs. So, you know, our, our objective in outlining our proposal, like I said, and it's not to trigger a giant new legal round, but if that board feels like it's necessary, we understand that. Also appreciate that the board recognized that there's a housing crisis and as I mentioned in my past item, we actually had done a poll that, that looked at a variety of topics and that we actually polled on park services and a variety of people were, most people were not interested in paying higher park fees as it relates to a trade off for housing. So we know that there's some serious issues out there, not just with how we feel about it, but the public as well. Also, I just wanted to mention that we have on record the apartment association from our last item, they continue to have concerns about this and how it will affect the ability for people to actually get into housing. So we have outlined what we thought was a proposal that could get us to a place of yes, of, of, okay, you know, here's our, here's our outline of where we think we can go to get this issue resolved and if, you know, we need to have new legal analysis or this will of the board to say, hey, let's try to get that number down a little bit, have the Park District come back with a number that they think is legally defensible and we can move forward. So we want to get this issue behind us, we feel like the, the median fee of the region of being around 7,000 is something that we should be shooting for and that we could agree with and we would hope to that, that we can hopefully get there very soon, so thank you very much.
Thank you Chris. And we do not have any comments on the phone. Okay, so do we need a motion to continue it to tomorrow?
We're not going to be prepared to address it by tomorrow.
Oh, you're not, okay.
Do we have our legal representative?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, we can, but it's not going to be a thorough analysis, this is like last minute, so I would, I would request next week at the earliest.
Okay.
Thank you Chair Frost, sorry for the 11th hour venture down. I watched the issues unfold with the 11th hour presentation of BIA's legal opinion and I, I had a few minutes while you folks were discussing things a little earlier and I was able to pull up a case, for example, that they used. And the only comment I wanted to leave with the board of supervisors, I understand that you're, you're leaning towards continuing the item to get more legal review and legal opinion. This is the problem with an 11th hour, last minute delivery of opinions from lawyers. I took 10 minutes, 15 minutes back there, I looked at the case that council relies on and there's two things that council tells you and this is what you're going to find out, in indicating that the NEXUS study is flawed, fatally flawed because it includes the shooting center. And he cites to the City of Alameda case as, which you probably read if you've had time to skim the letter. He also talks about the county's general plan and the definition of neighborhood parks and community parks. If you look at that, council concedes that the shooting center space qualifies basically as a community park. It's currently being repurposed, it's, it's property that's within the district's stable of property that is an existing facility. It's not open, that is true, but the case he cites to tell you that that's, that will make the findings in the NEXUS study invalid or illegal, that's not a correct assertion of what that case says. The court was very clear in that case to say, we need not and do not decide whether or not the inclusion of an existing park facility or recreation facility that is closed is not or should not be included in the calculation of the district's park space. The problem in the Alameda case that caused him problems is that they included parkland that was already owned with a specific designation that the fees that were being leveled was going to be to fund that specific project, that was the failure. So I know that you're not lawyers and I know you're going to defer this to your legal So I know that you're not lawyers, and I know you're going to defer this to your legal counsel, but I would only suggest or encourage the board of supervisors to have confidence in the work that your staff has done, confidence in my client and the work that they've done on this NEXUS study. And when we constantly get these 11th hour challenges that are designed to cast doubt in each of your minds about the legality of it, be cautious with that. I would only ask that you do that because, again, in 10 minutes, I can sit down and show you how that Alameda case is completely different in the findings that were made. I can also show you how the use of the shooting center is consistent with a community park use, which they contest. So I just wanted to offer that, that brief commentary. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. I do not see any questions at this time. Appreciate your input. Are there any others who wish to speak from either side? So we cannot bring it back tomorrow? It needs to be the 14th or?
Well, I would appreciate a week to address it. We have to work with special district staff to address some of the questions I think Supervisor Nutoli and others have raised today. If you want to bring it back tomorrow, that's up to you. So I want to defer to the board.
I think it's better to do what you can do, I mean, to work with you. So are you saying the 14th or are you?
That's perfectly fine with me, yes.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that? And do we need a motion?
Ma'am Chair, we know one board member has made very clear that they're not going to be here next week, and that's been, that's expected. And so, and I, again, I have no presumption as to how this issue will ultimately decide about this board, but I do think that in the context of that, we ought to have, you know, the five board members here and, you know, maybe we'll agree unanimously, or maybe we won't, but, you know, again, I'm not going to try to predetermine that. That's not my role. I'll cast my vote when time comes. But I do think it's important and certainly, you know, members can speak for themselves about their thoughts about the 14th. I'm not looking to, I punched up because I wanted to say that I think, you know, there is some time sensitivity to this, and we've, you know, occupied a lot of time in this space, importantly, because it is an important issue to all the parties involved. I think in light of the late correspondence, I, you know, I certainly anticipate that we would come today and make a decision and deliberate amongst ourselves once we conclude the hearing. I think the issues certainly are relevant ones and certainly as we've heard from, you know, the district's council and from our council, you know, they'll, they'll weigh in and give us, you know, their best take on this. And, but I, but I would just say that in the interest of bringing this to a close, and people can comment right up until the time we, you know, we cut off the, you know, the public testimony, so again, I'm not precluding that. But I think it's important, I think we've heard a lot about this. Board members certainly, you know, have, you know, weighed in at the, you know, prior hearings on this. And I think as we committed to, when we left this matter, you know, several weeks back, we, you know, we had the previous item, we've talked about the relevancy to housing costs, but we've also talked about the importance of amenities. And I think there's a, you know, a time that's fast approaching, it's not going to be today, that we need to determine this. And if we have issues with it, then we'll, you know, we'll let that be known at the time we decide it. But I want to give adequate time for certainly for Lisa or our council, certainly for district council, for the BIA, anybody else that wants to weigh in on this to, you know, give us, you know, their, their, the information that this board can have and will have for its decision on this. But again, I, you know, I'm not necessarily enamored of the idea of putting this over until the first of the year, but in light of the tomorrow's unreasonable expectation, the 14th, we're going to be one member shy, that I do think that probably in the interest of all the parties here and the fact that this board, you know, you know, will make a determination, but I think we should have all five members present if at all possible, and I think that is possible come, you know, when our first meeting is January 11th, and that's another month away. And I, again, I recognize this could be over the holiday season, but my suggestion would be that we hold it over to the first meeting in January and get this on the calendar and set it for a decision, and people can weigh in, but try to get your comments in between, before 5 o'clock the Monday before the, the hearing on Tuesday, 11th. If we could do that, it would be helpful for all parties, well, particularly for the board that has to make a decision on this.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I would.
Can I just interject something? And I didn't mean to imply that we should do it without Supervisor Serna, which I know you know that.
Oh, I know you didn't.
But I think actually holding it over to January 11th will give us an opportunity to possibly avoid what we avoided, what we've had the last two times now with 11th hour legal opinions and information. I would make the commitment to the BIA and to the Parks District to share our legal opinions prior to, you know, maybe a week in advance so that we all are on the same page. Even if we can't agree, I think that will allow us to be able to move forward at the next meeting, whether or not it's up or down, or go back to the drawing board.
Okay.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
That seems reasonable. We have a motion from Supervisor Nutoli and a second from Supervisor Serna, but I know I'm not done talking. Thank you.
I just saw the new screen come up.
But before we vote, we have one more supervisor who has some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just, I just want to comment that, and I, thank you Supervisor Nutoli, appreciate all your comments. And just notwithstanding the legal opinion, I mean, my hope would be that perhaps something can be worked out in the interim before this comes back to us, because in light of that discussion about the fees, just looking at this fee in combination with the $3,400 trails fee, it is a very high amount. And I hope that everybody maybe could step back and reevaluate this and perhaps come up with a, some kind of compromise or a way that we could lower the fee. That would be my wish when this comes back to us at the first of the year. Thank you.
Well, thank you Supervisor Desmond. And so we have a motion and a second to carry it forward to our first meeting in January. Please vote.
Do you want to time on that, or you'll pick a time?
No. I can't give you a time.
Okay. Because I, all right, that's fine. I'll work with you.
All right. I want to thank everyone for being here, and we'll hope that we can resolve this in Next item, please.
Item 55, I'm sorry.
56.
Yep, sorry.
It's all right.
Item 56 is the OE3 Training Center. This is a Williamson Act contract cancellation, use permit, design review, and a Williamson Act contract for a property located at 13800 Mice Road at the northeast corner of the intersection of Apple Road and Riza Road in the Kasumnas Community. And the environmental document is an environmental impact report. And if we do have anyone in chambers that needs to make a comment, a public comment, I do need to take an oath, and I'll have to also do that for the public comments. I just want to give you a heads up.
Thank you very much, LeAnn Moffett, your planning director, here to give the presentation on the Operating Engineers Local Number Three Training Center. We do in the audience have Greg Gassaway with OE3, their consultant Andrew White with Benchmark, and then we should have available on the phone their counsel, Mr. Zachary Kearns. So the location of this, well, first of all, the Operating Engineers Local Number Three Training Facility is a facility to allow for training of folks in heavy equipment. They have historically been located at the Rancher Marietta area, but the location of this project is 13800 Mice Road at the northeast corner of Apple and Riza Roads in the Kasumnas Community. The overall requested entitlements are the cancellation of a Williamson Act contract for the proposed 25 acre campus, a use permit to establish a private school on 450 acres out of the overall 1,500 acre site, a resolution to execute a new Williamson Act contract and prevent non-renewal scheduled to occur in 2024 on portions of the subject property totaling just under 14 acres, and then a design review. So again, the Operating Engineers Local Number Three do training for individuals on heavy equipment, all those folks who build our roads and fundamental building and all that important part of local infrastructure and buildings. They purchased this site in 2011. The site had been previously been a mining operation and it had a use permit for mining. And so planning allowed field instruction activities to commence in 2014 under substantial compliance call, given that what they were doing was using heavy equipment very similar to the previous mining activities. However, they do want to build a new 25 acre campus with classrooms, lunchroom, maintenance and repair facilities, a covered dig structure and administration buildings, and that could not occur until they get this new use permit. And then there is a 425 acre field instruction area where they will simulate real world construction activities. There is a dormitory component, and that will remain at the Rancher Marietta site instead of being out on this property. And students will be bused to the campus for the classroom and field training, and there's a condition relating, relating to the requirement that the students be bused so that we don't have all of that private vehicle activity here to this site. We did do an environmental impact report, and so the project includes that analysis as well as various mitigation measures to reduce potential impacts to an unavoidable level. This latest graphic, this graphic here shows the property boundaries in red, but it's really the area in the blue line there, kind of in the center, that is the subject matter where this facility will exist. Here's another graphic that shows where the, the classroom and base area is in that middle with the dark line. The yellow areas will be where the simulated construction activity will occur, and that will rotate over time. So in basically five-year increments, they'll, they'll be using around 80 acres. Then they will allow that to go back, be reseeded, be fallow, and then they'll move to another new site to, to continue to be able to simulate real world construction activities. And so the green will never be touched, but the yellow will have a rotating component that will be used for agricultural, some of it will be followed and will be used for ag and will move around over time. Hopefully that makes sense. This is the actual campus layout. The buildings are shown in tan here, so that large building on the right-hand side of the graphic is kind of almost like a very large oversized pole barn. It's a, open on the sides, but it will allow them to do training and activities when there's inclement weather. Hopefully someday it will rain again. I know we're not seeing much rain these days, but they will have a covered area to do that. And then there are other buildings in the center. There's an administration building kind of on the north end. There are classrooms on the west side, the left side. There's a maintenance building where they will both maintain their heavy equipment as well as training for that maintenance, as well as kind of landscaping and irrigation and ponds, et cetera. Here are some building elevations. I'm going to move through these fairly quickly. You can see that covered dig building there on the left as well as the administration buildings. So with regard to the Williamson Act cancellation, the staff report does provide in some detail the findings that you need to make, that cancellation is consistent with the purpose of the Williamson Act, and it is in the public interest. So the board needs to make finding number two in the affirmative. And, and, and there are also sub findings that other public concerns substantially outweigh the objectives of the chapter, and that there are no proximate non-contracted land, which is both available and suitable for the use to which it is proposed, or that development would provide a more contiguous pattern of urban development. So our staff analysis is fairly detailed in the staff report, and we, we have, we are recommending that these findings can be made. And we have particularly evaluated the availability of proximate suitable parcels, and we concur with the applicant's information that there are no such parcels available. So moving on to the use permit for the private school, I've already described the 25 acre campus and the buildings that will be there, that there will be 425 acres in total, that was a yellow area on the parcel where the field instruction will take place in 80 acres chunks that move around over time. And there is a new Williamson Act contract because much of the property will remain in Williamson Act and under ag grazing activities, both parts that will never be touched as well as parts that will be reseeded and used as the constructionery moves around. So the Community Planning Advisory Council Kasumnas met twice on this and recommended approval, seven to zero. The design review advisory finds the project in compliance. The Agricultural Advisory Committee recommends approval on a five to zero vote, and the Planning Commission recommends approval on a four to zero vote. So you have those recommendations in front of you. And the last slide is a summary of the staff recommended actions that I will not read into the record. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, LeAnn. Supervisor Nutoli has some comments.
Yeah, we may want to hear from the applicant, but I just, I wanted to ask, LeAnn, as it relates to the Williamson Act contract, so we will be amending the contract and then re-entering for the purpose of the application of the acreage that you outlined, 1,300 acres. Does the clock start over then? Because they had filed for non-renewal, which would have, this would take in the entirety of the property out in 2024. But now we're going to re-enter the contract, so those contracts have the, you know, the 20-year period, and you can't file for non-renewal until, again, that's not the intent here, but I want to be clear about the terms if we are making the finding as to how that contract is applied.
I believe it starts over, but yes, so staff are indicating we go back and the clock starts.
Okay.
From zero.
So basically, assuming this were to be approved, that then the 20-year period would, would restart and you, under the contract, you can't even file for the first 10. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, that's not the intent, so I just want to, but I wanted to be clear. It wasn't clear to me in reading the staff report. The other thing I wanted to ask about, and I know this has been in the works, certainly have talked with the applicant representatives over time and heard from community members. And I know that when this first was scheduled to come before the Kasumnas Plan Advisor Council, that there was quite a reaction to the dormitory portion to the residential piece of this. And subsequently was put over and, or it was put over and then subsequently came back, and that was taken out of it. And as you've outlined in the staff report, could you direct me to the condition where that, where the residential is prohibited? Because this will have all the campus aspects, including the shuttle that will, so folks will not report here separately, whether they're staying at the facility in Rancher Marietta or coming from elsewhere. But I just, the condition, because I know that I've heard from at least one property owner in the area, not immediately adjacent, but that, you know, concern about how solid that condition would be, LeAnn, and so.
Right. I think it's inherent in the project description where the use permit does not include a dormitory use, and I think that's very clear in the record. And we have several other conditions. 10 indicates the campus population will not exceed approximately 20 admin personnel and faculty and 150 students during peak training. And then number 11, that they're going to bus the students from Rancher Marietta to the site for campus and classroom and field training. I'm not sure, because it didn't include a dorm portion, that's part of the description of the inherent use, what it is. I don't think we wrote a condition saying no dorms because they're not allowed to have dorms as part of the project. Is there, there may?
So you cited number 11, which is ongoing operational.
And I'm being pointed to condition 14.
And 14, no dorm, it will be constructed as part of the campus and no overnight habitation is part of it. Okay.
We do have a condition.
All right. And that rides with the use permit, or is it attached to the entire site or just to the 25 acres? So in the event that there was a change of heart on that, what would it, what would it take? Just an amended use permit or?
It's an amended use permit to the board.
But clearly, all the plans that show by way of record, I know that, again, you just said that, I want to be.
There are no dorms, and they would not be able to. There are no dorms, and they would not be able to add dorms without coming back through the process.
And no overnight habitation is permitted. So that's the other piece of 14.
Well, there's no dormitories.
Yeah, no dormitory, will be constructed as part of the campus and no overnight habitation.
Could they have one security person?
Well, yeah, that's, you know, to have somebody else.
They may be able, as part of their school, to have, you know, a night watchman.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I get that.
That would be, I think, customary incidental to a private school.
Supervisor, certainly, is that hopefully if they're security, they're not sleeping.
I think we would consider a night watchman to be customary and incidental to a private school, given probably the value of their equipment.
Yes, right.
But yeah.
To have onsite personnel from the standpoint of the security of the site, so. And there's no development that's permitted on the portion that's put into contract, right? Are there any agricultural structures, you know, if they were grazing, can they have a barn on the?
Yeah, I think you could have whatever you could normally do with ag practices.
Okay, so they're not prohibited, as long as they meet either zoning and/or?
Right, the Williamson Act contract provisions, yeah.
Okay. One other question that, and it may have been addressed when the Ag Advisor Committee looked at it and/or the CPAC. As folks here at the board are well aware, I mean, we continue to talk about groundwater, groundwater usage. What were the details behind amount of projected use of water?
You know, I would have to defer to other staff on the water. So can you rephrase the question again?
Yeah, well, just, again, if you're going to have facilities, I don't know if you're going to have to have sprinkler them, so you're going to have to have storage.
Yeah, so they do have some water tanks for fire suppression.
Okay.
Because they have had to address that.
Yeah.
So when you go back to that site plan.
Yes.
Here, on the site plan, kind of in the top north, you see little round structures. Those are water storage facilities, and there's also some ponds that would be available for emergency fire suppression.
Okay, so that's their source of water from, so that's been reviewed by, I assume, I don't know if this is SAC Metro or Wilton, or we have any, we have some areas out there that aren't served by either one, so that they're cal fire.
It's a cal fire actually out here.
It's cal fire?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's all I had.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I do not know if Mr. White or Kern would like to speak.
Hi, I don't know if you can hear me. This is Zach Kearns.
Hi, Zach. It looks like Andrew White is approaching, and then we'll give you an opportunity to speak if you would like to. Hello.
I was just going to say anything unless there are specific questions for me at this point.
Excuse me, I'll need to swear you all in, so if we could just do that now. I'm not sure if those of you who are in chambers are going to make a comment, and if you're going to make a comment, sir, on the phone. So I'll just do it now for all of us.
Let's ask who is, who is going to speak. It's, okay, so Mr. White and, pardon me?
Greg Gasly, the Director of Apprenticeship.
I mean, Greg, yes, hi Greg. So, yeah, go ahead.
If you wish, I'm sorry, please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, just state your name for the record and the statement that you have been sworn.
Okay. Sorry, Greg.
That's okay. I'm Greg Gasly, the Director of the Apprenticeship, and I've been sworn. I was just going to give some oversight on the program, and if, I don't know if you guys are all really familiar with it, we do have a couple of videos if you guys would like to see them. We have over 750 apprentices in our, in our program. Rancher Marietta, we used to train there, we've been there for almost 50 years. We moved out to get away from kind of the, because Rancher Marietta is kind of growing here and there, so we've kind of moved out. But that's really all I have to say. We'll answer any questions about the apprenticeship, and we'll let Zach speak, and I'm not sure if there's any questions for Andrew.
Great, and I know from personal experience that it is remote. You can hardly see it from all sides. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, so just for the record, again, I know that you and some of your prior folks that were, you know, working with the program, been working on this for some time, so as, you know, culmination, this hearing, just want to be clear though, so there, one, we're not permitting it, but there's no intent to now or in the future to consider the residential portion, the dormitory portion, because that was a big concern of the community. Obviously, you took that out of the plan and found both the recommendation from the CPAC and Ag Advisor Committee. So I just want to be clear for the record that there's no intent to do that. You're going to, whether folks continue to stay at your Rancher Marietta site or elsewhere, they're going to be housed off-site though, that's, and bussed to the site.
Yeah, they will be bussed to the site, they'll be housed off-site.
Okay.
Our main intent right now is to get some infrastructure in there because we're still running off of generator power.
Right.
And ponds and things like that, so.
Yeah.
It's our main focus right now.
Okay. But this carries the future. I mean, the use permit runs with the property, so as long as you, you know, adhere to the conditions of the use permit, you know, it actually has no expiration date on, so I just, I want to be clear for the record, because again, I think taking that component out found good solid support with folks who might have otherwise objected to the, not to, objected to what you were doing out there, to the training, but I just think that the intensity of the use on the site, so beyond the classrooms and the field instruction that you have there, so. And I know you'll do a nice campus, I don't have any questions about that, but I just want to be sure, because I think that's where community, you know, was, I heard from folks, I'm sure you did as well.
Yes, I did.
Because you attended public hearings, so, and, but obviously it comes with a little support from the commission as well as both the Advisory Council and the Ag Advisor Committee and staff, so you're in a good spot as relates to that. Okay, thanks, that's all I had.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. And also, Mr. Kern, did you wish to speak at this time?
I don't have anything in particular unless anyone had any questions for me.
Okay, I see no questions at this time. Mr. White? Okay. So at this time, we'll ask if there's any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
So we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. I'll be prepared to make a motion to support, and I just wanted to make a comment. I had a chance to go out and tour the facility last week, and is that you, Kat? I can't really tell with the mask on, but just OE3, I mean, it's just what a tremendous facility, in my opinion, both the separate dorm facility in Rancher Marietta and the training facility itself is extremely impressive to provide a high level of training for apprentices and ongoing training for your industry. So thank you for the tour. And I had mixed feelings about the video because I hear it may have some footage of Supervisor Natoli driving a front loader, but I don't know if that's true or not, but anyway, for another day. But after we're done with comments from the board members, I'm prepared to make a motion to support this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I was, again, I'll certainly support, second the motion. I wanted to ask as a part of the motion, though, that we're going to include the certification to environmental document. Obviously, that was in the works for some time and required some revision, so it was on, it was listed on, I guess, page 14 of what you'd put up on the screen, LeAnn. That would be all the actions that would be required of the board and a motion?
Yes.
And that includes the finding as it relates to the Williamson contract?
Yeah, so it's basically the actions are on the front page of the staff report. So certifying the final EIR, adopting the findings, adopting the MMRP, and the remainder.
But that specific finding you outlined, it was in your, that's included in the motion and then, yeah, condition, okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right. So I had, and I would second Mr. Desmond's motion if he made a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve staff's recommendation, all eight of them, from Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. And congratulations. I'm excited about your training facility. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for people, what you're doing, so wish you all the best.
Thanks. Thanks.
Item 57 is the authority to execute an 18-month conditional loan commitments with JHC Vista Nueva LLC and Sacramento 11th Street LP in the amount of 2.12 million in Mental Health Services Act funds, each for the rehabilitation of the Vista Nueva and Central Sacramento Studios developments.
Good morning, Chair Frost and Board members. Ann Nichols from Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. In October 2021, City Council and the City Housing Authority Board approved SHRA's loan commitments and partnerships on two Home Key projects, with the first Jamboree Housing on the Stabridge Suites Hotel conversion in North Natomas, and with Danko Communities on the Best Western or Sutter House Inn motel conversion downtown. Last month, the City Housing Authority and Developer Partners submitted the Home Key applications to the state for each respective development. We anticipate receiving award letters by early next year. This report is for the approval of Mental Health Services Act or MHSA loan commitments for the Jamboree and Danko's motel conversion developments. The Stabridge Suites Hotel was constructed in 2007. After conversion to housing, Jamboree Housing will rename the project to Vista Nueva to serve homeless households with at least one minor child. There are currently 117 studio one and two-bedroom units with kitchenettes. 10 of the units will be for transitional housing, 106 units for permanent supportive housing, and one management unit. All units are restricted to homeless households earning at or below 30% of area median income. The permanent residential units have all been awarded project-based vouchers. Minor rehabilitation includes renovation to interior units, offices, and common areas. Amenities will include a 24-hour, seven-day desk clerk, pool, picnic area, multipurpose room, new children's playground, and pet areas. Vista Nueva's property manager is Domus, and Housing with a Heart will provide onsite resident services such as after-school assistance and 4.5 case management staff. Additionally, there will be 15 units restricted to the MHSA funding program, and case management along with supportive services will be provided directly by the County Department of Human Assistance for those units. If Home Key funds are awarded, occupancy could occur as early as spring next year. The Best Western Motel, known as Sutter House, was constructed in 1974, located at 12th and 8th Streets, which will be developed by Danko Communities. Danko is an affordable housing developer who has constructed over 25 affordable multifamily developments throughout California, including several permanent supportive housing developments throughout. This will be their first project in Sacramento. Central Sacramento Studios, the name of the motel after it's converted to housing, will provide 92 permanent supportive homeless housing studios plus one management unit. Each unit will include a newly installed kitchenettes. The units will be restricted to households earning at or below 30% of area median income. Danko anticipates applying to SHRA for project-based vouchers next year after the kitchens are installed. Repair and renovations to interior units, offices, common areas will also take place. Amenities will include 24/7 desk coverage, fitness center, pool, sports area, and pet area. Central Sacramento Studios will be managed by Danko Property Management. They currently manage Danko's permanent supportive housing developments, including the Home Key-funded project in Oakland. Life steps will provide 15 hours of weekly onsite resident services and two case managers. Additionally, there will be 15 units restricted to the MHSA funding program, and case management and supportive services will be provided directly by the county. If Home Key funds are awarded, occupancy could occur by summer next year. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the 2.12 million in MHSA loan commitments for the construction and permanent financing for each Vista Nueva and Central Sacramento Studios developments. Staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy had some questions.
Thank you, Chair. How do we know that these are going to, how are we targeting homeless population?
Could you clarify?
Yes. Supervisor Kennedy, LaChelle Dozier, Executive Director. The requirements for the project-based vouchers at Vista Nuevo, new name, requires that they be formerly homeless individuals. In addition, we're doing something a little different there. We're also having permanent supportive housing, and we're also having kind of a, what would you consider a mini shelter. So some will actually be for those who are literally right off the streets in a shelter situation for 10 of those units for the first, I believe, three years. The same with the other property, Central Studios. It will have that requirement, and that's the list that will feed into the property.
Perfect, thank you. And by the way, I did have an opportunity to take a look at a District 2 project Home Key the other day, thank you. And I am extremely impressed by the program, so that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Cerna.
Great, thank you. So I'm certainly prepared to make an, making a motion this afternoon to support these projects. I'm a little concerned because I continue to hear from constituents on occasion, and even some members of the City Council, Sacramento City Council, expressing a bit of frustration not understanding what the county is currently doing relative to mental health service provision for our homeless population. And even though these projects are in or near the city of Sacramento, I really would appreciate it greatly if our executive team at the Housing Authority could make it abundantly clear that, you know, this is part and parcel of what the county is not just doing now, but has been doing, especially as it relates to the use of Mental Health Services Act funding. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to express that, since it seems a bit timely that I've, as recently as this morning, even heard those concerns, so. And with that, I'm prepared to, if there are no speakers on this item, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Do we have any public comments on the phone?
I'm going to just double-check if we have callers. No callers at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Cerna. And Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. All right, we have concluded our business for this morning, and at this time, we will adjourn to closed session on the seventh floor and return at 2:00 PM.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is December 7, and it's 2:03 PM, and we are ready to begin our afternoon agenda, and I'll ask the clerk if you'll please recall the role to establish quorum.
Yes, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Cerna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. First item, please.
Item 58 is the 2021 redistricting approval of the final supervisory district map.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Natasha Drain, your Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer. We're here today for your action on a resolution to adopt the final supervisory district map as seen in Exhibit A to the resolution. This final map is the result of a process that was on a much more shortened timeline than we would have liked and that we were not in control of. Despite this, the county was still able to conduct substantial community outreach through county news stories, social media, and the numerous public workshops conducted in person and virtually. The county also provided several ways for the public to provide its input, including at workshops and board hearings, via the county's redistricting email, as well as the online and paper mapping tools. The public took up the challenge of redistricting by submitting several of its own maps for consideration, and more than 200 written comments reflecting their interests, as well as the numerous public comments received during meetings. This final map is also the result of your comments received during meetings. This final map is also the result of your deliberations that began on November 2nd, with the first round of draft maps. Following the November 2nd meeting, we held a virtual workshop on November 6, seeking additional public input. The combination of supervisor discussion and public input resulted in an additional draft map presented to this board on November 16. On November 17, the board provided direction to NDC, the county's demographers, on a final draft map. A final draft map was posted on the county's redistricting website on November 19, so that the public could quickly see the board's direction on the final draft. Also, following the November 17 meeting, the county's GIS team worked with NDC to proof the map boundaries, ensuring that the boundaries reflected the board's discussion, and to address miscoding of census blocks to avoid sliver precincts and new ballot types. As a result, NDC and the county's GIS team made minor adjustments, and these are explained and reflected in Attachment 1. Following these adjustments, a final supervisory district map was posted on the county's redistricting website on November 30. Doug Yocum with NDC is here if you have any questions about these adjustments. Finally, we have been asked when these new boundaries will take effect, and how we will notify the public. The boundaries are effective immediately upon adoption by this board. We will notify the public in several ways. Following the board's adoption of the final supervisory district map, Kim Nava will send out a news story noting the board's action, and providing a link to the interactive map, so that members of the public can see the news, the new lines, excuse me, and where they reside within them. The county also offers, for the public's benefit, several district lookup tools and online maps. Because of all these tools and maps use different source data, we are coordinating, updating all of these tools simultaneously in an effort to reduce confusion for the public. We anticipate that these tools and maps will be updated no later than the week of January 3. We will also include this information in the county's news story. Courtney Bailey Canales, the county's registrar, will also add a page to the voter information guide, showing and explaining the new boundaries, as well as notifying registered voters via postcard prior to the June election. With that, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. We do have a couple of supervisors with questions. Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Natasha, for all your help in shepherding this effort over the past several weeks and months. I think we all understand that the expedited timeline made it even that much more challenging for all of our staff resources, but thanks to your leadership, I think we've had as good a process as we could hope for, given those tight timelines. You mentioned that upon adoption today, the map becomes effective immediately. So, does that mean that a supervisor, a sitting supervisor, whose district changes substantially, will immediately begin to receive, for instance, relative CPAC information, agendas? I mean, there's more to it than just declaring that the maps are now effective. It's going to come with some adjustment in terms of how, you know, my colleagues and I are kept informed about any changes to any advisory bodies that are geographically specific to that new district. So I just wondered if you could comment on that.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. Staff had a lot of conversation about what do we do now, and I think it's going to take some time to adjust. Yes, the boundaries take effect immediately, but I don't think that that means everything overnight turns over. It's going to take time to make the adjustments, as you've suggested, and I hope that you and the public will have patience with us as we work on making those adjustments and getting everything put in place. I hope that answers your question.
Well, yeah, I really just raise it just to put the public's mind at ease, too, that if you see a map, or a portion of this map, that appears to be somewhat dramatically different than the current map, don't feel like we're going to let things, you know, fall to the cracks here. We're going to do our best to stay on top of things and make sure that, you know, the sitting supervisor is paying close attention to the new territory, or the loss of territory even, based on what we do today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just add briefly, legally, there's obviously no reason that the current supervisor can't continue to respond to constituent concerns. That's simply a matter of how the board divvies up its own business. So certainly, that can be by arrangement of the supervisors that have had territory that's been moved around.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Natasha, I agree. I think that you did a fantastic job through a difficult process, and I thank you for that. I'm just going to make a brief comment, and then I'll have my piece. I've had a lot of time in the last couple of weeks to reflect upon the process that we went through to get here, including talking to a fair amount in the community, people in the community, particularly the AAPI community. And when I reflect upon what the community that I'm hearing, and the concerns that they have with our process, I have to say that it makes me uncomfortable. I will be voting no on this map, because I do not feel that we adequately addressed community concerns. You know, it was, I had asked to look at combining Land Park, this is just one issue, into one district, and I was told that there's no rationale for that. And I personally think that splitting a neighborhood is rationale enough. It was also stated that the LGBTQ community as a community of interest, and nobody believes that it's a community of interest more than I do, would be impacted. But yet, we received from the queer Democrats, among others, of Sacramento, their organization sent us a map that showed the community of interest for the LGBTQ community going down to the freeway, and not crossing the freeway. Also, the city of Sacramento passed a resolution formally adopting an LGBT community, Q community of interest, and Equality California's maps were actually used to help identify the data from results of Prop 8 and Prop 22, membership from the Equality California, one of the state's largest LGBTQ organizations, domestic partners, same-sex heads of households, persons of same-sex sharing living quarters, and other indicators or markers. Where there are persons, those organizations clearly have expressed that the LGBTQ community of interest is largely based in the downtown, midtown, with a certain, much smaller, impact from East Sacramento, Curtis Park, and Land Park. That's just one example of where I think this map is flawed, and the reasoning behind it was flawed. But, so, I will just say that I don't think that drawing the districts up in the dais was a good practice. I don't think it's best practice. And I will also be, I realize it's 10 years early, but the farther these things get in your rearview mirror, the more chance they have of falling by the wayside. So, at some point, I will be proposing the formation of an independent redistricting commission, so that hopefully, moving forward, we'll have a better process, and one that I won't be participating in, but in redistricting in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I want to say, I can't believe all that you and NDC and all the staff did to pull all this together so quickly. I know that Doug Yocum is out there. I don't know if he wished to say a couple words. Okay, answering questions.
He's telling you no.
No questions, done. And so, I think, was, did that conclude your presentation prior to us voting? We do have some public comment also. So, you want to just...
I'll wait till after the public comment and your vote, and then I'd like to say a few words if possible.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, let's, I think, let's move to public comment. We do have one in chambers, and I don't know if we have anyone on the phone.
And we do have at least one caller on hold.
Okay. Okay, so, I'll call Mike Heller to the dais, or to the podium. Good afternoon, Mike. It's been a while since I've seen you.
It has been a while. Good afternoon. Chair Frost.
You have two minutes.
Supervisors, I'm actually going to leave that alone. Thank you. First of all, I also want to thank the county for the expediency of this. It's really appreciated. I also want to introduce Becky McDaniel, who is my board chair. I'm with the Rialenda, Alberta Recreation and Park District. We had a number of people participate in the Zoom call a couple Saturdays ago, a few Saturdays ago, and I know that Grand Park was mentioned. And Grand Park is west of Levy Road, the Sutter County line, Alcorn to the south, and Highway 99 to the west. It's within our Recreation and Park District boundaries, and it is still situated in District 1. And I know that you guys worked really hard to include communities, try to keep them together, and we appreciate what happened in the southeast portion of Rialenda. It got moved over to District 4. We believe that the Grand Park region area, it's 5,700 acres of land, which is within our Park District boundary, should also be in the same district as the rest of Rialenda and Alberta. So, we're hoping that you would consider having that moved over to District 4. We've reached out. It would not change population numbers right now, because it's mostly farmland and uninhabited, but it is part of, on the unincorporated county, and is part of our Park District. So, we'd love to have all of Rialenda and Alberta together in one supervisory district, and really appreciate you guys considering that and incorporating it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Supervisor Cerna has a comment.
I'd like to respond to that. Well, I understand the Park District sees that potential development area as impacting and having some influence and significance for their needs. I would just point out that the southerly boundary of those 5,700 acres abut the city of Sacramento. And so, I can make the argument, I think, all day long, that it belongs in District 1 with the rest of the city of Sacramento for that reason. It's basically the same logic that was just explained for a small park district, and this is, now we're talking about a city of almost a half million people. So, while I appreciate the last-minute effort to try and get it into a different district, that argument falls flat with me. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Cerna. And I think this was a comment that came over email or phone, and we asked Doug and Natasha if they could comment on it. So, I'm going to ask you once more, so that the public can hear your feedback, if you don't mind.
Sure. Doug Yocum, National Demographics Corporation, good to see you again. I have some notes here that I may have to refer to in just a moment. Anyway, I do recall the comment on the forum from the district. When I looked into it, it is uninhabited land, and it was decided by the board, when we did this drawing, that we would keep that line as a current line, and we would not change it. So, I considered it. Like I said, there's nobody out there, and someone pointed out to me that it's in the Park District, but apparently, it's not in the Water District. So, there's some question as to whether it's Rialenda or not. I'm sure everybody has an opinion, but it didn't, that issue did not rise to the surface when we were all together, putting this map together. So, I thought that when you made a decision to keep the line current, I thought that was a pretty good decision.
And I just want to comment on that also. I know in some of the other areas of the county, there are Park Districts and Water Districts that cross political lines. They're not all located within a certain jurisdiction, and I think, you know, if you, I just think that's normal. Wouldn't you concur, Doug?
Oh, yeah. Happens everywhere.
I know, I know where the Park District's coming from. They want to, you know, they're just want it to be the Rialenda community, but the challenge, I think, is at this late date. I mean, that would be a conversation way early on to work our way through. This is like, we have to have this approved, and we have to vote on it again on the 14th. And so, it's difficult to go in and make changes at the last minute also, I think. So, I thank you for your comments, and so with that, I thank you for clarifying your thoughts on that, Doug. Okay, and we do have someone on the phone, or?
Yes, could you please transfer the caller? Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Samantha Alvarez, and I am part of the Sacramento community. I am calling in because I'm actually deeply disappointed by the map selection that the Board of Supervisors have made. I know that there is a lot of hard work that comes with mapping and making these decisions, but the fact that the county of Sacramento has made very minimal changes to the map that has been selected for adoption is truly disheartening. The decisions that we are making are not trivial. They are directly impacting our day-to-day lives for the next 10 years. So, the way that the map is moved forward without keeping South Sacramento, Vineyard, and Elgrip together makes no sense. It completely ignores the community of interest testimony. Not only that, but it also keeps the AAPI residents and other communities of color separated. It's a total neglect to the potential opportunities that keep communities whole, provide a stronger voice to select representation that is needed in our communities. And again, these decisions will be affecting us for the next 10 years. So, I really do wish you guys reconsider not moving with this map forward. I have looked at the maps that have been submitted, and the one that represents more of our communities and is more reflective is Map 101. It has a better portrayal of what our communities need. And also, moving forward, I would request that the Board of Supervisors adopt an independent redistricting commission for the 2030 and beyond. Thank you so much for your time. I know a lot of hard work goes into this, but it will be affecting us for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments. For calls.
Okay, and I think now, this time Natasha had a few more comments, and I had some comments as well.
I was just going to take a moment of thanks, but if you'll indulge me, but I was going to wait till after you took your vote.
Okay, sure. Supervisor Desmond.
Since Natasha will speak, thank you, Madam Chair. Since Natasha will speak afterwards, I'll just pile on also, and then thank Natasha, and Courtney, and the rest of the county staff, and Doug for your work. Natasha, you've been really terrific and responsive to all inquiries, and I think you've done an outstanding job throughout this process. I just wanted to thank you, along with my colleagues here.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Cerna.
I was just simply going to make a motion to adopt the map that's been presented to us.
Chair will second. Oh, and we have some comments from Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just to speak to the motion, intend to support the motion, and certainly appreciate the comments that we've received, and I think the serious consideration by community members that were submitted to both through our various portals, but certainly through this board. And again, I understand, even from today's testimony, obviously, there are still folks who see it differently, but I think our deliberations certainly were done in the public venue, and with the ability for folks to both participate in chambers but by phone, and albeit, there may be some disappointment, I think that we worked really hard to certainly address the myriad of guidance, guidelines, as well as obviously, the things that are embedded in law, and tried to do that in a way that I think fairly reflected certainly communities of interest, and recognizing that, you know, that's not a perfect process, but what we arrived at, and what I intend to support, reflects much of the direction guides were given, and obviously, will be something that, you know, we retain over the course of the next 10 years. But as this community continues to grow, and we see, you know, neighborhoods populated, and folks establishing... neighborhoods populated and folks establishing and working in neighborhoods and communities and so forth, I trust there'll be a good deal of input the next go-around as well. But I want to just, again, add my thanks to our staff and to all the folks that participated. And with that, I intend to support the motion.
And thanks to you, Supervisor Natale, for what? The five times you've been through this?
Thank you, Supervisor Natale.
And the fifth district continues to shrink. Growing population, but geography continues to shrink.
Okay, please vote. And the motion carries with Supervisor Kennedy recording a no vote. All right, we made it. We made it through this step. We have one more step, I guess. We're going to vote again on the 14th on this? Or, no, we're done. This is it.
You are done today.
So we got under the wire before the 14th is what we're, 15th. So I know you have some comments.
Thank you. Could we? If we can zoom in a little bit on that. There you go. So this is the team of folks that worked on this project this year. You'll see it's a lot of staff here. But first, I'd like to thank each of you supervisors for trusting in us to administer the redistricting process on your behalf and for your input along the way. I think it made the process better. I'd also like to thank Ann Edwards for giving me this opportunity to lead. It really has been a privilege. And to David for your partnership in this work. I'd also like to thank National Demographics Corporation, especially the Dugs, as we affectionately call them, Doug Yocum and Doug Johnson, for guiding us throughout the process. Finally, at the board hearing on November 17th and today, you offered your gratitude for my work on this project. And while I'm grateful for that acknowledgement, the credit really belongs to all the staff, as you see them here, that worked incredibly hard this past year to ensure the success of this project. Redistricting, as you know, is no small undertaking, especially under a shortened timeline during the COVID era and with new rules requiring substantial community outreach. It required numerous staff to ensure that every public meeting went off without a hitch and that the county adhered to the Fair Maps Act and to public health guidelines. Given the size of this team, I won't take the time to thank everyone personally, though I'd like to. But I do want to personally thank Mike Morris, the team's project manager. Mike, you were the glue that held this team together and ensured the project's goals and objectives were met, always met. When you were faced with a challenge, you met it head-on. Thank you, Mike. He was also our video voiceover. He might kill me for saying that. I'd also like to offer a collective thank you to the rest of the team that worked on redistricting. I thank you for your participation on this project, for being the best team of individuals we could have asked for and for making the work on this project look easier than it really was. Your contributions were noticed and appreciated, and I am truly grateful. With that, if you would indulge me, please join me in thanking this team. Thank you.
I'm going to come down. I'm going to come down to the podium. I have a couple of words I want to say on behalf of the board.
Supervisor Frost, may I make a comment before you wrap it up? I just want to thank absolutely everybody on the team and the board, but I really need to specifically shout out to Natasha. I was brand-new in this job, and Krista called me and said, "So hey, are you on top of this redistricting thing?" I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And she said, "I think Natasha's on it." And Natasha was on it and managed the process beautifully, along with everybody else up there. So thank you, Natasha.
I also want to thank Natasha because it was my first time as chair at the county, and I've never been through the redistricting. And it was a lot, what you pulled together. And we appreciate all that you and all the staff did. There's this resolution with the help of Natasha to help me as the board chair to thank everyone and memorialize everything that staff did. But I also want to thank NDC, all of the team at NDC, Doug Johnson and Doug Yocum, for your patience with all of the supervisors. And I just want to say thank you to the supervisors because I don't know if everyone really, I don't know. I have a feeling you all feel the same way I do, that this is a very painful process to go through, giving up a piece of something that you hold special and dear and people who you really love and want to represent well. And I want to thank Supervisor Desmond for being the hole in the donut. You know, I know. I mean, it was painful at times, what we were trying to negotiate through how we're going to work this out because Sue didn't have enough, and it had to go through Desmond to get to Frost. And so that was, it felt like, at times, felt like horse trading, which isn't a really nice word to say, but, you know, how else do you say it? I'll take this, or how can we work this out? And I'm so glad we only do this once every 10 years. So with that, I have a resolution here that was prepared. And I'm going to just go ahead and read it because I think there's a lot of important information at the risk of being repetitive, a little bit repetitive. And so this resolution is in appreciation of the county staff for their work on 2021 redistricting. Whereas, the county of Sacramento is required to adopt a new map redrawing the supervisory electoral district boundaries by December 15, 2021, following the dicennial census using population-adjusted data. And the legislature passed the Fair Maps Act, AB 849 Bonta, Chapter 557 Statute of 2019, establishing new criteria and timelines for the redistricting process. And whereas, in compliance with the Fair Maps Act, the county held two Board of Supervisors meetings to provide information about the 2021 redistricting process, held six public workshops in supervisors' districts, and three virtual workshops to provide information about the 2021 redistricting and to receive input into the process, including communities of interest, and held six public hearings, two of which were held after 6:00 PM, to receive input from the board and the public on the redistricting process, including feedback on proposed district boundary maps. And whereas, the county staff worked countless hours to ensure that the redistricting process was well-administered and that the public was informed about how meaningfully, how to meaningfully participate in the Board of Supervisors 2021 redistricting. And whereas, the public submitted more than 200 written comments and provided public testimony at the board meetings and workshops, making suggestions for redistricting and supervisory boundary lines, as well as submitted their own maps for consideration, either hand-drawn or using mapping tools available. And whereas, many county departments were instrumental in the success of the 2021 redistricting, including the following departments. Department of Technology provided overall project management and IT support for online and hybrid meetings. Voter registration and elections led the community engagement efforts, ensuring all interested stakeholders were informed of the process, as well as facilitated the public and virtual workshops. The Clerk of the Board managed agenda materials, calendaring and noticing for all meetings and hearings, as well as insured interpreter services were there and available. The Office of Governmental Relations and Legislation managed and led the redistricting project from start to finish and ensured the county was compliant with all legislative requirements and followed best practices for redistricting efforts. County Council advised and ensured that the county adhered to all legal requirements of redistricting. The Office of Public Information led the community outreach efforts, including working with IT and designed to develop 2021 redistricting website, drafting and distributing all articles and social media posts relating to the process and communicating with the community-based organizations to partner on getting the word out about 2021 redistricting. And the county's GIS team assisted with research, line-checking, map drawing, and production. Now, therefore, be it resolved and ordered that the Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize and commend the dedicated work of the county's public servants for managing the 2021 redistricting process and ensuring that the public and all interested stakeholders were well-informed and provided with several ways to participate in the redistricting process. And with that, I just want to, I want to thank Ann Down, Ann Edwards, our CEO, top person in the county, the CEO, and everyone who participated. Thank you for your effort and for making it something very hard for the supervisors as easy as it could be. You're to be celebrated. Thank you. I'm just going to give them a second to grab their items. Item 59 is the COVID update. Good afternoon, Siobhan.
Good afternoon, Board. Siobhan Gattari, Health Services Director. I am joined on the phone today by Dr. Casirier, Sandy Damiano from Adult Correctional Health, and Captain David Bequart from the Sheriff's Office. Although, as of last week, we had seen a slowing of the COVID-19 case rates in Sacramento County down to about 8.5 per 100,000. The Thanksgiving gatherings have probably led to what we're seeing today, which is an increase. So as of today, our case rate is back up to 13.6 per 100,000, and likely due to the gatherings that we've seen over the past couple of weeks. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Casirier to discuss what we know about the Omicron variant and that was discovered in South Africa right before Thanksgiving. The outbreak we've been experiencing in the jail since October 18th is on the decline, which is great news. So currently, as of today, we have one case in the main jail and 16 at RCCC, for a total of 17. Currently, the jail census is at 3,353. I am sad to report, however, that we did have one additional COVID-related death of an inmate just last week. It was a gentleman with underlying medical conditions who was released on compassionate release and had been hospitalized for several weeks before passing on November 2nd. Last month, the board requested that the Office of the Inspector General do a review of the protocols and the situation in the jail. That has occurred, and the Inspector General has posted their report publicly on the public website, which is, for those of you who want to navigate there, it's inspectorgeneral/saccounty.net. So you can look at the report there. So with that, I just wanted to turn it over to Dr. Casirier for some additional updates, and then we're happy to take questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Dr. Olivia Casirier, Public Health Officer. So I have a few additions. One is, as Siobhan noted, we have seen an uptick in our cases. And this is not just observed in Sacramento County. It's been observed in the entire region. And from anecdotal information, it appears that this is related to holiday gatherings, as many of the people that were coming up for testing were noting that they had either traveled or been at a gathering, and that's why they were getting tested. So we're continuing to monitor that. I also want to make sure that the staff asked me to make sure that I noted for Supervisor Desmond that today we're in North Highlands, and we've had a very successful clinic. I think at the last check, we had at least 30 people that had gotten vaccinated. And I know that we do have additional meetings with you to continue to look at ways of increasing accessibility and vaccination rates in that region, which is still lagging behind all the other zip codes in Sacramento County. I also want to let you know that Sacramento County Public Health was notified on Friday by the Stanford University researchers that there were low concentrations of a mutation that is used as a marker for the Omicron variant. And this was detected in Sacramento wastewater. The Stanford University researchers have been working with Sacramento Region Sanitation District to do the surveillance, which is an additional tool that we use in public health to be able to monitor for changes such as new mutations. And so in this case, it was detected in the wastewater. The meaning of this, which is a question that we're beginning to get, is that it basically implies or is indicative that probably we do have the Omicron variant, most likely in Sacramento County. We have not identified any individual with this variant to date. We only do whole genome sequencing on a portion of the positive tests that we get. And right now, those are all of the Delta variant, but we are still waiting to see what will happen as time goes on. There's a lot that we still have to learn about the Omicron variant. I think the reason that it is a variant of concern is because of what we know from where it started in South Africa, where it has become the dominant variant now. And so there is some concern that it might be more transmissible than the Delta variant, but we don't know that yet. We also are concerned and still waiting for additional information on whether it is associated with more severe disease and also that whether our vaccines are effective against this variant. And so again, the reminder to people who are concerned about the Omicron variant is that the Delta variant is still the predominant variant that we have. And there are things that we know we can do that are effective, such as getting vaccinated and getting a booster if you're eligible for a booster. For those who are having symptoms, they should stay home and also seek testing. And in Sacramento County, we still do have an indoor masking mandate, so that will be continued. As we head towards another holiday season, we do ask people to exercise caution, especially when they're going to crowded places and also if they are planning to travel. With that, I'll turn it back to Siobhan.
Excuse me, Dr. Casirier. Supervisor Natale had some comments.
Hi, good afternoon, doctor. Wanted to ask about, as you were going through, I guess, what's been detected in the wastewater. So are agencies throughout the state nation testing their wastewater for certain constituents that relate to the virus? And if so, who oversees that particular aspect of testing? What lab? Again, I'm just curious about kind of protocols of determining that and where's that information submitted to? And? that information submitted to, and how it's being validated and so forth? So I guess I'm just, I'm interested in knowing a little more, if you could just take a moment.
Sure. So the wastewater surveillance is one of the tools that we're using right now. It's not in every single county. There were several counties that were selected by the state to be part of this project. So it's more like a sentinel surveillance, where they select certain areas that will help in being able to detect some of the changes that we're interested in, such as new variants coming into the area. So Sacramento County was selected, and so the, it's, the testing is being done by a research group from Stanford, and they send their results to us. We do not get the samples, we're not part of the sampling, but it, the research group is working closely with the Regional Sanitation District. The results do go to the state, and as I mentioned, we get an email of the results as well, when there are results that are of interest, such as this.
Dr. Casirier, so how long has the testing been going on? I mean, so were they looking for, you know, the predecessor variant, the Delta variant, and have they been doing this for some period of time? Again, this is the first that I'd heard of it. I understand from a colleague that made national news yesterday, but I guess I'm curious as to how long they've been doing this, or is it just recent with, you know, some discovery of, obviously, some of these variants? And if they're out to plant, and they're, you know, they have a certain protocol, I presume, that where they take their samples from in the process of treatment of the wastewater? And I guess lastly, I would just ask, with the treatment processes, which are fairly thorough, and, you know, destroying pathogens and so forth, very thorough, is there any concern that somehow this would bypass some of the processes we use, and then lend itself to transmission in any way?
So the, this process of surveillance using the wastewater for, as a way of surveillance for COVID-19, started at the beginning of the year, but it was being done on a very small scale, with just a few counties. It was only in the summer that Sacramento County was approached to be a part of this project. And the reason, the reasons that it is helpful for public health to do this, it's, one, as I mentioned, it's the ability to be able to detect new variants, but it can also be used to detect if there's an increase in cases. It could be an early indicator if you're, if you're going into a surge, because sometimes it could be picked up earlier through the wastewater than waiting until we get cases reported to us. As far as the safety, the process that we have in place for making water safe is very efficient, and there is no risk to the population as a result of people shedding.
Okay, so the, then the samples are taken pre-treatment in order to, as you pointed out, get some sense, one, if it's present, but secondly, if there's an increase, I guess, by volume, or the, however that's determined? So, okay. And one other question, Dr. Casirier. So obviously, according to Public Health, and then they just went to Regional Sanitation District staff directly? Or was it, or was information provided to our county executive? And we all sit on that board, so I don't, maybe other board members knew that we were doing this testing. Maybe we do it regularly for different types of constituents? I guess I'm just curious about that.
I can't answer for how involved the Regional Sanitation District is. I'll talk, I'll find out for you what their process is.
Well, we have a board, we have a board meeting tomorrow, Dr. Casirier, so I guess we can.
So I'm sure they will be prepared to answer that question, yes. As far as for public health, I was notified about it, but once we got notification about the Omicron, that's when I notified our director, Siobhan Cottari, and I know that she took it up the chain as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And also, I want to note, because I did say that we initially got notification on Friday, but they were still doing additional testing, and it was only yesterday that they gave us confirmation that they, you know, additional tests that they had indeed detected the Omicron variant in the sample.
Just one other question, though. So who controls the flow of information in the sense that they're doing the testing? Is there a doctor protocol that they will notify you, Siobhan, County Executive, in the event, you know, whatever their determination, they do it on a regular basis, or they can do that as they please? And do they release the information to the general public whenever they choose to? I assume that if they come in and it's research, and it's, you know, been sanctioned by, you know, whoever gives approval and accepts the data and so forth, that there must be some accepted procedures for how the entities where you're doing the testing receive their information? So it's not secondhand, I trust, that there is protocols in place that you and/or appropriate parties in the public health agency would be, you know, one, if not the, one of the firsts that are notified?
Yes, they do have a protocol. They asked us to identify one point of contact that they have been in very close communication with, and that person, as soon as they got the, one of our epidemiologists, as soon as they got the email, they forwarded it to me.
Okay.
And then they, in turn, also do notify the state, and I think there have been instances, like in this one, where there's a lot of interest because of the new variant, where I believe that the Stanford researchers have also provided information to outside entities.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Casirier.
Dr. Casirier, this is Sue Frost. I'd like to follow up on that conversation that Supervisor Natoli was asking about. I'm curious as to the research that Stanford did, what, were they using, were they isolate, you know, in my understanding, to isolate the virus, you take mucus or bodily fluids, and then you isolate, put it in a centrifuge, and get, you know, put it, basically spin out all the impurities and isolate the cell, and then put it in some kind, form of Petri dish or whatever, without any kidney cells, or without any chemicals to grow it, and then re-enter it to someone else to see if it causes that same symptoms?
No.
Were they using Koch's postulate?
No.
Or what type of method were they using in determining that this is Omicron? How do they know it's this versus Delta versus COVID?
I just want to be clear that this is not a cell culture, so they are not culturing the virus. So the process that you have outlined is not what they're doing. What they do is that because when a person has COVID, they do shed through their stool. So what they do is, when they get a sample from the sewage, yes, they do concentrate the material, but what they are looking for is genetic material, the RNA, and then they have instruments to be able to look at the genes and detect mutations. So in this particular instance, there is one gene or one mutation that is specifically used to identify the Omicron variant, and that was the first one that they detected, and then they used other methodology to look at other mutations, and again, confirmed that these are mutations that are found with the Omicron variant.
What is the name of the research group from Stanford?
It's the Stanford University Research Group. I don't think they have a specific, special name.
Thank you. I don't know if you were done. I think we might have, oh, Supervisor Desmond has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. K, were you done with your presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. I just want to chime in, and thank you for the efforts in North Highlands. I know we just got on the calendar with Siobhan and Dr. K's staff, a new coalition effort to increase vaccine acceptance up in District 3. But now, since we have new maps that have taken effect immediately, I'll certainly be talking with Supervisor Frost about what we've been doing in District 3, and maybe try to get involvement by her staff as well. But, but thank you. I mean, I have obviously been paying very close attention to where we're doing these vaccine clinics, and I know there are challenges that come up at times, just based on the CBOs in some of these areas, and how it's, they're not, they're not all created equal. And, but I'm going to keep pushing for increased vaccine opportunities and efforts by the county in my district. So thank you for your responsiveness, Siobhan and Dr. K.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Following up on Supervisor Desmond's comments, and I want to acknowledge his advocacy for parts of his district that he's been obviously very vocal about in terms of making sure that access to vaccines are a very high priority. I think all of us are trying to do that. Having gone through the whole process of attaining my booster last week, I noted that it was a bit cumbersome, trying to navigate the county's own website just to find it, find out where a walk-in clinic was. And I was just wondering if there's a potential to, because I assume boosters are going to be around for some time now, if there's a way to perhaps refine the means by which people can very easily find out where to, specifically not appointments, but walk-ins. I think most of us out there are so busy, we would probably take advantage of walk-ins when we find available time, which is not often. But that, to me, seems like an unnecessary impediment that still kind of runs contrary to our mission to maximize vaccination in the community. So I would just encourage us to maybe take a fresh look at whatever web pages, portals, verbiage, graphics, that we're using, maps, and, you know, maybe look at it through the lens of someone that knows nothing about the county of Sacramento or its website, just simply wants to find the nearest walk-in, and what those hours are, and how to go about doing it, and how, you know, how can we make that just much more simple, easy to use, and effective?
Appreciate that feedback. We will take a look. Thank you.
Thanks.
When, I have a question regarding some of the news that we're receiving about increasing spontaneous abortions, or loss of child, and cardiac myocarditis, and strokes. Are we, in these vaccine, are we updating, this goes to informed consent, are we updating our package insert? Because we're giving, we're basically not providing the comernity, which is the approved vaccine, but we're providing the emergency authorized vaccine, which did not have a package insert. And so are people being told that there can be these side effects? Are we providing informed consent, real informed consent, before they're taking the vaccine? Great, I will let Dr. Casirier answer that. Thank you.
Yes, so from the beginning, we have always provided informed consent. That is one of the requirements by the CDC for being able to give the vaccinations. As far as side effects, those are things like sore arm, headaches, and low-grade fever. The adverse events, there is a process for being able to report adverse events through either the VAERS process, there's also another process that healthcare providers are able to use. I do want to note that we have not received any report from CDC about any of the adverse events that you have named, but I know that that's a process that is available.
Thank you.
Oh, I also, I also want to make clear that the comernity, the formulation is exactly the same as the Pfizer vaccine that was being given under the EUA. It's just that after the full approval was, was given, the company did choose to rename it, but otherwise, the formulation is exactly the same.
I, my understanding is that the original EUA was also extended. There is an approved vaccine that's not available in the United States, but the emergency authorized vaccine falls under a different liability shield. So by law, legally, it's not the same. Okay. Please proceed. I just wanted to say that.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay, thank you so much.
I see no more questions. We do have some public comment, though. But did Dr. Damiano wish to speak, or?
No, I think just if you had any questions about the jail, we certainly could answer those.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go to public comment, and Mr. Alex Joe, or is it Joe Alex?
Alex.
Alex, hi, Alex.
Hi. Thank you for letting me ask this question, but for Dr. Casirier, she's still on the line?
Well, you, you have public comment. It's not really a question and answer, but you're welcome to talk, discuss what's on your mind, and.
What's on my mind?
And then if she, and then if she chooses, she can respond.
Sounds great, thank you. What's on my mind is the origination of the Omicron variant, and whether or not we can agree, as the extended news media is discussing this, they say that it is a discovery in South Africa, not necessarily from South Africa. So is there a way that there could be some clarification on that point, just for the members of the community and myself, who might be interested in knowing whether or not it is? Because it's, people are questioning it on either side. Is it from, or is it discovered in South Africa? That's my comment or question.
I don't know if Dr. Casirier wants to respond.
I've heard both as well. So at this point, I, I don't know what, I think those are things that we might never find out. We know that it was first identified in South Africa. I guess that's a more accurate way of describing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Please transfer the first caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, hello?
Could you, sir, can you mute the meeting in the back?
Yes.
Can you mute the meeting in the background?
Okay, and then you're, I was just gonna, okay. What are you, here?
If you can mute, sir, could you please just turn your volume down with, if you're watching the meeting, just turn it down while you're talking?
I've done that, and I'm taking off speaking.
Okay, thank you so much.
How long do you think, how long do you think before I'm on? Okay.
Hand me that.
We can, we can, we can hear you. Can you start with your comments?
Okay. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jim Stone, and I'm here today to say that I was recently released from RCCC, and the I was recently released from RCCC, and the COVID situation out there is, I don't know, I would consider it for myself, a dangerous spot. I'm in the I'm 65 years old. I'm in a higher risk group, and the Sheriff's Department would quarantine us, then test us all clean, and then bring in a bunch of people and fill the beds all up like three feet apart, not six feet, as the, you know, COVID does. You know, they say six feet for social distancing. And I was in a dorm when the gentleman, an older gentleman, was taken to MAU, and he passed away there. Now, there were underlying conditions from the information we got. But COVID was the thing that kind of put the nail in his coffin. And so, they started quarantining everybody. And then I was in a dorm. There were 14 people. We all tested negative, and the Sheriff's Department just filled the place up and brought in three people in that first group that were also COVID positive. So, we had to go back under quarantine. They continually did this. They got that group cleared. They brought in more. Two of those groups that they brought in were COVID positive, and they were taken out. We were quarantined again. There are inmates in there who are waiting to go to court. Their judicial process is being delayed because they won't transport them to the court. Somebody has to do something. Now, I've read comments from you guys in
You have 15 seconds, sir.
And, yes. Hello?
Yes, you
Can you guys hear me?
You have 15 seconds to wrap up your comments.
Okay. I've seen comments by the board about the Inspector General coming in to check it out. Basically, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department is not telling the whole story out there, or something would be done. They're setting it up for a class action lawsuit for, I mean, it's just people are put in health risk.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
Okay. I, as a citizen of Sacramento County, beg this board to send somebody out there to find out what's really going on. And you will find out that they are jeopardizing the health of every inmate at RCCC in the downtown main jail. Something's
Excuse me.
Population
Can you please wrap up? Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry that I don't have more time to give you names, dates, and times than I have, as I documented throughout my time out there. But please do something because those inmates are at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Please transfer the next caller. And I understand that this next caller, there's two people who are making a comment. They're just using the same phone. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Does this board and Dr. Casiri know about the court-ordered FDA files that were released? We keep hearing the phrase "safe and effective," yet there is mounting evidence consistent with these injections being unsafe and ineffective at preventing transmission of the COVID-19 virus and its variants. This statement was emailed to Dr. Casiri today, and the public needs a reply from her. In the words of journalist Mike Adams, quote, "Thanks to the efforts of a group called Public Health and Medical Professionals for Transparency, we now have smoking-gun confidential documents that show Pfizer and the FDA knew in early 2021 that Pfizer's mRNA vaccines were killing thousands of people and causing spontaneous abortions while damaging three times more women than men," end quote. The FDA fought having these documents released by court order, then claimed the agency should have 55 years to release this information. A judge ordered the release of 500 documents per month, and the very first batch of documents contained this bombshell entitled "Cumulative Analysis of Post-Authorization Adverse Event Reports." The document reveals that within just 90 days after the EUA released the Pfizer's mRNA injection, the company was already aware of voluntary adverse reaction reports that revealed 1,223 deaths and over 42,000 adverse reports describing a total of 158,893 adverse reactions. In the same document, Pfizer said its mRNA injection could cause, quote, "vaccine-associated enhanced disease, including vaccine-associated enhanced respiratory disease," end quote. This means the FDA knew the injection could sicken and kill patients who were later infected with COVID. Pfizer also told the FDA its injections could kill people and that it had no information about its effectiveness. Yet, the FDA, Fauci, CDC, and more fraudulently pushed the injection as safe and effective anyway. Based on this document, it appears that the FDA itself has been neck-deep in a criminal conspiracy to hide the truth about injection injuries and deaths while granting usage approval to very same corporations that openly told the FDA its products were killing people. And many on this board are complicit by echoing these statements of "safe and effective" and refusing to block mandates in this county for any age, field, or even school districts. It does not matter if some got it and are okay right now. That's like saying I drove drunk last night and I didn't get in a car accident, so it's totally safe for everyone else to do so. I'm going to pass the phone to a second person who's going to read their own statement.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cyan, and I'm eight years old. My dad works for the city of Sacramento. My dad is a really good person who is being forced to show his private medical information to his job so he could keep working. He refused to do that because it goes against all of his rights. He got put on leave without pay because he was protecting his rights. It was scary to me because I don't want anybody to force my dad to do something that he is against his that is against his rights. Also, it was really scary that my brother, who has disabilities, to lose all of his medical help for that period of time. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm calling with an addition to the report from Health Services as they neglect a report on VAERS. As of November 26, 2021, there have been 19,532 reported deaths to VAERS for the COVID injection from zero days to receiving it to 28 days out from injection. That is 1,071 more deaths reported in just two weeks before on November 5, or an average of 76 deaths per day. It takes over 30 minutes to complete a very complicated report to VAERS, and few people even know how to do it, much less know what that VAERS exists. It is unknown what the true death rate is. With 18,461 deaths and a total of 927,738 reports overall, 52,087 more than November 5, or an average of 3,720 injuries reported per day. I'm sorry to tell you, but this is not vaccine. It's a death injection. And with government not adjusting their course of action with false terms like "safe" and "effective" and applauding mandates around the country, this is clearly an assault on the American people. There is no logical conclusion for the push of this injection with such high risks associated with it, other than this being a bioweapon. There have been zero deaths in our county, Sacramento County specifically, between the ages of 0 to 19. Zero deaths. Why do these age groups need to be vaccinated? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Gabrielle, resident of District 2 and lead for Sacramento County. I'm going to talk to the people that are listening at home. This this county public health officer, the California Department of Public Health, and this board have made it clear that they are never going to end this local health emergency. We are 21 months into two weeks to slow the spread. Viruses mutate, but they do not become more deadly. Their their nature is to not kill off their host. They mutate. They become more virulent, infect more people, but not kill them off. So, when we're tracking case rates and we're using that as a measure to decide if we should stay open or closed, and we're basing it off the mutagen adjustability and the virulence of a virus, that's insane. That's a matrix to keep us in check. The only thing we have left is peaceful, noncompliance. Take off your masks. Don't accept the jab just to keep your job. Don't beg your school board, or this board, or the city council to let us be free. You take your freedom. You ignore them. We elected them. They are ignoring us. And it is clear that what we have is not depth versus Republican, not health versus unhealth. We have freedom versus tyranny. So, if you're sitting in your office and you know that this is a farce, not that people are dying. Obviously, people are getting really sick, and that is a problem of itself. But what the county is doing, when they're not telling us about therapeutics, when they're trying to tell us that the FDA-approved comernity that's not available in the United States is just the same as the EUA product share, they're not being honest that the second to have an FDA product in the United States, it wipes the EUA of everything else. There's money flowing in this country. There's too much money to the public health, to the CDC, to the FDA, for them to ever do that. We're not looking at a time where things are going to be
You have 10 seconds.
So, I'm asking you, stand up, Sacramento County. Ignore them. Stand up for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. There have been several discussions and requests to see information on vaccine injuries. Why is the VAERS information not being included in your reports? Since it is federally mandated that reporting to VAERS be done, what information and training is being provided to hospitals on the reporting requirements? Where are the statistics on the amount of reporting that is being done? Are 100% of injuries being reported? 20%? 0%? Without this information, it's difficult to discern what is happening to protect your constituents from injury. I would also like to know what information is being provided to the public about the risks, injuries, and deaths occurring from these vaccines. Is this info posted on your website? As I believe Phil Serna was saying earlier, that we need to make vaccine info easy to find, we also need VAERS info. We have a right to informed consent, and without injury information, there is no way for anyone to make an informed decision. I ask once again, where can we find this information, and when will you be including including it in your reports? And lastly, using the language "vaccine hesitancy" or "vaccine resistance" language is demeaning and offensive. Many people who have chosen not to take the injection have done so after doing much thorough research. Please stop demeaning us with this offensive language. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments.
Thank you. And I want to thank Siobhan Katari and Dr. Casiri and Dr. Damiano and Captain Beckworth for being with us and for your update.
Ma'am chair.
Yes.
Just before folks get off, if they haven't got off the line, since we did have the caller who was recently released, at least according to what he put forth, could we just have a real brief, not so much a response, but, you know, we've got the information from the IG, got the stats. What is the protocol when you're bringing folks? Because that's where the the largest number is. I think, as you said today, I think there were 16 if I wrote the number down correctly. But if you could just tell us, and maybe maybe the sergeant, but if somebody could, Siobhan, just give us the outline, so in light of the concerns that were expressed.
Absolutely. Yeah. Let me see if Sandy is on the phone first and give her an opportunity. Otherwise, I can.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Sandy Damiano. And I think the caller, I'm not quite sure when he was at the branch jail, but there was that period of time when there was some cohousing of the close-contact quarantines with some positives. The custody stopped that, resumed use of the COVID-designated housing on November 18. And so, our numbers have been going down. They're down to 16. And the plan for custody is to maintain our designated COVID housing going forward. They've come up with a plan to do that. Captain Beckworth is also on the line if you have questions for him.
Okay. So, until further notice, there'll be the housing for those that are COVID-positive? Is that so they're housed together, or they actually have COVID?
So, a very good question. So, we have four different types of housing on COVID. We have intake quarantine. We have what's called close-contact quarantine for possible exposures. We have suspect quarantine, and that's when people have symptoms and their testing has not been completed. And then we have confirmed case isolation, and those are for COVID-confirmed. So, the 16 people we have at branch jail today are all in the COVID-confirmed housing, and we are all following the COVID protocol with both the custody staff and the medical people.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Damiano. Yes.
This is Dr. Casiri. I just wanted to mention also, because I believe that the supervisors, one of your requests was to have an inspection. And we have been working with CDPH and are planning or scheduling to have a joint inspection with Public Health, CDPH, and Correctional Health to look at some of the COVID-specific issues.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is your nominations, item 60. You are continuing to December 14, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Citizens Advisory Committee. You're also Public Health Advisory Board, continuing to January 11, 2022. Carmichael Oldfodhill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Community Review Commission, Cosumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, County Planning Commission, January 25, 2022. Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Assessment Appeals Board, Building Board of Appeals, Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, First 5 Sacramento Commission, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Employees Retirement System, Sacramento County Youth, I'm sorry, Employees Retirement Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Sacramento Environmental Commission, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board in the Southeast Area, Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is the Adult and Aging Commission.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Deborah Bonner. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Cemetery Advisory Commission. Supervisor Kennedy.
Reappoint Stephanie Cadel.
Thank you. And Supervisor Desmond?
Please reappoint Robert La Perrie.
Thank you. County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Cosumnes. Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to January 11.
Supervisor Natoli.
I just continue one week to do December 14. And we're just getting some confirmation relative to one of the applicants for one of the vacant seats. So, do it next Tuesday.
Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council. Supervisor Natoli.
We're still waiting more applicants. Let's continue that one to January 11, please.
Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Frost.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Bonnie Douglas and Susan Gilmore. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Gwendolyn Wilson. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Council.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Robert Ryzick. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Jessica Sankas. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Law Library Board of Trustees.
Chiefs recommend reappoint June Coleman.
Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Effie Ruggles. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend reappoint Ricky Chiefs recommend reappoint Ricky Townsend. Continue the remainder to January 11.
Sacramento County Behavioral Health Use Advisory Board.
Please continue to January 25.
And South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Cerna.
I didn't think I had any appointments today, so I don't have that sheet in front of me.
I have a notation to continue this to January 25th. Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay. And then Supervisor Kennedy.
This is South Sacramento.
South Sacramento Area Community, yeah, you're South Sac-CPAC.
Reappoint Erica Herramio and continue the remainder to January 25th.
January 25th? Okay. And then Sunrise Recreation and Park District. Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Tim Verka.
Okay. And then last is Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Natoli.
Continue to January 11th.
And that concludes your nominations. Your next item is the county executive comments.
No comments, thank you.
And then your supervisor comments.
Supervisor Desmond, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Something I wanted to just touch on briefly. Supervisor Cerna brought it up in the context of the SHRA item regarding MHSA, and I've recently been receiving inquiries about this as well. And you and I had a chance to talk about it yesterday. And can you just describe, you mentioned something's going to be coming to the board in January to discuss MHSA expenditures and what we can anticipate over the next year?
Yes, thank you. I was just looking at our long-term agenda, and it looks like on January 11th, there'll be a Mental Health Services Act budget update.
Great.
And approval of proposed expansion.
Okay, great. And in the course of that discussion, I'm sure we can kind of look back and see where the funds have gone. Can we have a discussion about where the funds have gone in the last few years, just to demonstrate to the public that we are spending that money effectively and maintaining reserves in a responsible manner, but otherwise getting the money out the door in support of programs?
Yes, I'll ask that that be included.
Great. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up, I know that, you know, I'm happy to serve on the two-by-two with Supervisor Kennedy, and we really haven't had any reports out from the two-by-two yet, and we're still working on a partnership agreement. But something that continues to come up is kind of the level of coordination, who has what role between the city and the county. And I just wanted to put it out there that that is something that is going to be a key component of that partnership agreement that we're working on right now. But already, the level of cooperation is dramatically improved. And then one other thing I wanted to mention is there have been discussions about this at the city council. You and I have had multiple discussions about our coordinated entry system and some of the shortfalls in the system. One thing I'd really like to see is maybe a discussion with Sacramento Steps Forward about how we can improve coordinated entry, because in my discussions with you and other service providers, and even some of my colleagues up here, is oftentimes, our coordinated entry is anything but coordinated and can be dramatically improved, which I think is really a key to improving things that we do. So I'd really like to hear from Sacramento Steps Forward and hear some of maybe their ideas for improving that coordinated entry system.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to make a note on an item before we adjourn, and there may be some adjournments. And did want to ask relative to item for a report back. We've had plenty of testimony over the last few years about illegal fireworks and discussion of the Fire Advisory Task Force that was working on looking at social host ordinance and so forth. When we return from the holiday break, will be right into January, those permits are issued for the legal fireworks in February. That typically is a trigger for some folks to come in and talk to us about, what are we doing? And I don't know, I know we had last, we had some people appear before the board or call in in September. There's been some ongoing work. Some jurisdictions have adopted a social host ordinance and have, you know, conducted their own review, some municipalities and so forth, including, I think, maybe the city. I think Citrus Heights and Ranch Cordova were two of them that did. So could we check and see when we expect to have a report? And I trust it'll be after the first of the year, but...
I can check. I don't know that one is planned at this point, but I will certainly look into it.
Well, because otherwise, we get into the spring, and then here we are. We're right back into it, and, you know, we talk about it, we get the complaints, and, you know, whether we choose to act on any particular recommendation might come to us. I just, there was a group that was meeting, including fire officials, and so now that you would get regular reports on it, I just think it's important that as time passes and then we're right back into the season when it gets to be an issue, and it will continue to be an issue, but how do we seek to try to, you know, address at least portions of some of that activity? Okay. And then just before we adjourn, just would note, Madam Chair, that today is the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, and we still have veterans and certainly family members, generations now surviving, members of families, and just would note that. And I know there were ceremonies here locally this morning that have been part of a longstanding tradition to recognize certainly loss of lives, the sacrifice, and obviously, all those who served during the time of war. And would just note that, that certainly would, as we sit here, we're certainly, we enjoy the opportunity and the freedoms to conduct the public's business in this setting. And, you know, I attribute that in part, in good part, to folks who have stood up in defense of our nation over the generations. So we just note that today, 80 years for all those that lost their lives and sacrificed, and all the family members who perished, but certainly in a very long conflict and war that many hundreds of thousands of Americans, as well as people throughout the world, lost their lives. And just wanted to note that. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Kennedy.
No, I just, I have an adjournment when it's time.
Oh, okay. Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you. So I have a request and then a thank you. The request is, it's been a number of months now since this board acted to adopt Laura's law, and I would like to just kind of put on the radar for our CEO. I'm not sure when the right time is, but maybe it's in the spring. Like to have a report back in open session about what's transpired since that time in terms of its implementation. And then lastly, I just wanted to publicly thank our CEO, Ann Edwards, for what I think was a very productive meeting last Friday with representatives from the Town-Town Sacramento Partnership, and the sheriff's office, and behavioral health, and correctional health. We met to discuss the prospect of doing things a little differently, a little more effectively when it comes to planning for inmate release from the main jail, to both enhance the access to services that folks coming out of our jail system need, and also to make sure that they get to where they need to be, where they, I mean, geographically where they want to be in terms of transportation. And I think that, given the nature of the discussion, I think we're well on our way to trying to ameliorate some of the longstanding impacts that have been most acutely felt here in downtown Sacramento when, you know, inmates are not given those things, access to transportation and services. So thank you, Ann, for that, and look forward to the follow-through.
Thank you, Supervisor Cerna. And before Supervisor Kennedy proceeds with his adjournment, I wanted to ask if it would be appropriate to have Supervisor Desmond at the Ranch of Cordova two-by-two, since I no longer have Ranch of Cordova, and he and Supervisor Natoli do. And that is on Friday at 2:30 PM. I can have my secretary talk to your secretary. Okay. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Former Sacramento mayor Ann Rudin passed away on November 25th at the age of 97. Ann was the eldest of three children, born to an Italian-American family. Her father immigrated to the United States from Sicily and settled in Hamilton, New Jersey. She attended schools in Hamilton and nearby Philadelphia, and went on to study at Temple University, where she earned a bachelor's degree in education and became a registered nurse. She taught in the School of Nursing at Temple, and later earned a master's degree in public administration from the University of Southern California. She also taught at Mount Zion Hospital School of Nursing in San Francisco. Ann came to Sacramento in the late 1950s. She was elected to the Sacramento City Council in 1971, the first woman to be elected to the dais in two decades. She was elected as the city's mayor in 1983, the first woman to be elected to that office, where she served for two terms as mayor until 1993, when she decided not to run for reelection. She was a champion of women's rights, one of the earliest supporters of LGBTQ rights in Sacramento, and a tireless progressive advocate. She was thought to be a compassionate and hard-working mayor who led by example, taking the lead on difficult issues like military base closures. Before holding elected office, Ann was the president of the California League of Women Voters, and she was a strong member in the community as an activist. She was a friend and mentor to countless women and an inspiration for them to break the glass ceiling, as she did. She uplifted and empowered everyone around her to be advocates for important causes that they believed in. Ann truly was a caring and inspiring member of the community. Her list of accomplishments will continue with the legacy that she leaves behind in Sacramento. On a personal note, Ann was a friend and an example to me of what public service should be about. She was kind, determined, and tough as nails when she needed to be. I ask the board to express our condolences to Ann's family, friends, and the community for their loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. And with that, we have no further business, and this meeting is adjourned.